Praise the Lord, everybody. Good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome to our January ninth, two thousand twenty-five meeting, retreat, budget meeting, and I turn it over to Mr. Bena.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Vice Mayor, members of City Council. Happy New Year, right? Twenty twenty-five. This is the first time that this body has constituted, other than swearing in to a degree, and then also organizational meeting have met as a body. So congratulations to the newest newest members, Mr. Deemer, Ms. Timmer. Congratulations. Congratulations to Mr. Feraldi and Dr. Wilder on your renewals and your terms. Thank you again, and happy twenty twenty-five. I do want to acknowledge or maybe recognize a belated birthday that we have here, Honorable Ms. Reed, and her this past weekend she turned thirty-two. And she looks fantastic. So happy birthday. So today, as the mayor explained, we do have our winter winter retreat. And I'll pepper in budget because realistically, what today is about, and I see that, Dr. Wilder, these numbers in front of you help Philip and Shaquille back there kind of coordinate their cameras. So as these mics light, what happens is their cameras help orient to whom is whom it is that is speaking, and they have that coordination back there. So if you're wondering what those numbers are, that's what those are. A bit of housekeeping, before I get into that, I want to acknowledge kind of the city staff of this last week. We've had pretty cold temperatures and quite a bit of snow, and we've worked well with Lynchburg City Schools. And I want to acknowledge Public Works and Water Utilities, our public safety personnel, and a myriad of other people who have made sure that we've been able to handle this with some pluck and/or ability. We're looking at more cold this coming weekend. It looks like we may get more precipitation, but it's going into the weekend where, other than our forward-facing folks, most be home. Anybody whose trash was missed on Monday because we did not collect it will be collected on Saturday. Right, Gregory? Yep, Saturday. Okay, making sure of that. There are things that you give thanks for, not the least of which is water, right? We, you know, think of and pray for our friends down there in Richmond, and some of the wrestling that they're doing with it. And, you know, municipal services being what they are, and you'll hear a bit of this today, the things that you go to bed and don't necessarily think about until they aren't working right, not the least of which was two of my family members who went to Richmond for Dancing with the Stars and found out that their hotel wasn't operable because there was no water in all of Richmond. So nevertheless, much they had a good time and came home. So with that, let me, I have some prepared elements here that I'll read. I often go off script, remember, in between undergraduate law school. I went to seminary, so if I move from preaching to meddling, sometimes just forgive me. So thank you all for brave in the cold to join us here today with our first winter storm of the season behind us and another potentially looming this weekend. I'd like to thank all of our Public Works, Water Resources, Public Safety, and other forward-facing workforce for their incredible diligent work this week. A bit of information in housekeeping. Please note the Wi-Fi title and password, which will be located in the information sheet that's in your books or binders that you've all received. Very important. Additionally, the restrooms are downstairs and straight ahead, meaning go downstairs and go straight ahead. As you can see, there are snacks available to you during break. Sam, Samantha, wave over here soon. We see her over there. Thank you, Sam. We'll come around with more waters, but please help yourself from the fridge. Lunch will be brought in around noon, and again, we have some opportunities for you to take a breather, meaning at some point, I'm going to turn it over here to Ted Delaney, and Ted's going to tell you about the Point of Honor and some of the history about it. This is where you are. If you didn't recognize, we're at the Point of Honor. There's a building over there that Ted's going to explain to you, or brown bag it. I've asked Dr. Ben Copeland, who's the acting superintendent. We are going to have God's Chicken, which is Chick-fil-A for lunch. And so you're welcome to take a tour, check your phones. But Ben's going to be here and have just kind of an informal lunch with he and I. So if you'd like to meet Ben, he'll be here at lunch. If there's anything you need, Sam is here again, and Meche over there at the staff table, they can help make sure you have everything you need or in order to have an enjoyable retreat. I'd like to welcome at this point Ted Delaney, our museum director. Thanks to Ted and his team for hosting us today at this, the Carriage House. Ted Delaney.
So thank you, Mr. Benda, for the introduction. I want to welcome everybody to Lynchburg's best-kept secret, and that is Point of Honor. Maybe not after today, but it is so wonderful to have all of you all here. Thank you, Mr. Benda, for making this possible, for bringing such a distinguished group here. I don't know that City Council has ever met on this property. So this is really special for us and really wonderful. I'm so grateful that you all are here. Thank you for handling the tight quarters. I know this is a small space, but this is a really special, unique spot, and we wanted to make sure that you all knew we were here. So I'm going to give you just a brief, the briefest of brief history of the place so you know where we are, and then I'll be around all day if you have questions or if you need anything. So Point of Honor is the original name of what was originally a seven-hundred-acre plantation that stretched from where we are right now all the way out Rivermount Avenue to the Randolph College campus. So a huge piece of property that today is just four acres. It was originally in Campbell County. Blackwater Creek was the dividing line between the city and the county. And to get to the property here by carriage took two hours to go from downtown to get to where we are right here. You had to go to Hollins Mill and then up. The house, the main house, the historic site that's just up the hill here was built in eighteen fifteen for Dr. George Cabell. George Cabell's claim to fame is that he was Patrick Henry's personal physician, and the house was built here for him and his family. He's also the namesake of Cabell Street. Some of you all probably came in on Cabell Street to get here. That was the original farm road to get here. And so for the past hundred years or so, since about nineteen thirty, this property has been either owned by the city or managed by the city of Lynchburg as a site for public use. And a lot of people don't realize that this was actually a neighborhood recreation center for about forty years between about nineteen thirty and nineteen seventy. We have great old photos of like swing sets out front. There was a basketball court down here on the corner. Great photos of kids playing here. I just found out this morning that Mayor Taylor helped to make some of the bricks to build this building here. Is that right?
On the bottom, I reinstalled bricks there.
Okay.
Some of the bricks had crumbled. We got bricks from popular forces, brought them over here with the mortar and all, and I put them back.
That's incredible. Had no idea. The building that we're in is called the Carriage House. It was built in the mid-nineties as a visitor's center for the property, but it was meant to look old, look like it was the original Carriage House, hence the look of the beams and the interior here. So today, we welcome thousands of visitors to Point of Honor every year. That includes visitors to drop in for guided tours. We do field trips with students. We have special events all year long. Some of you all may have been here for outdoor theater. End Station often performs on the grounds here. Opera on James has done concerts here. And I think this is the best spot to watch the downtown fireworks for the July. Anybody been here for that? It's gotten to be kind of a special hidden secret spot. We had three hundred people come here this past July to watch the fireworks from the front lawn. So please, please come back. Please bring your family, bring your friends. Let me know if I can ever give you a personal tour of any part of the property. If I can do anything today to help make your retreat go more smoothly or make you more comfortable, just let me know. Okay?
Thank you, Ted.
You're welcome. Thank you.
If you, if you, if you mentioned it, I didn't hear it, Ted. This is also, because it was in Campbell County, and you could not duel in the city of Lynchburg, that's how Point of Honor, am I wrong in saying that?
No, you're right. So the local legend is that it got the name Point of Honor because it was a place where men defended their honor by dueling on the grounds here on the front lawn because it was illegal to duel in the city limits. But if you crossed over Blackwater Creek and came into Campbell County, you were good, good to go. So thank you.
Mayor said, you know, he had his gloves with him, and he was going to suggest that we do that at lunchtime. And I just said, no, I'm not, not going to do it. No, thank you. I won't do well with that. Well, thank you, Ted. And before I introduce the next portion of our agenda, we have some visitors with us and their friends, more more to me, and then I hope that they become to you. What I want to talk about today is just the overarching idea of, you heard the story of this place, right? That when I reflect on, and I'm coming to know some of you, I don't know as many of you as well as I know some of you others, what's interesting is each of your stories and how important they are to the fabric that is the city. And I think what you're going to hear from staff today is stories that they're going to use. You'll hear from Sean and from Holly, and they're going to take data and tell you stories about the different awards and about the things that you see in them, about the workforce and what it takes to supply municipal services. And then from Donna and Greg, you're going to hear the story and what the stories are that come from our city budget. And then to begin with, I've asked Ron Keith and Ann Seward, who are here with us, and I'll introduce Ron here in a second, both Ann, to help us understand maybe who each other are a little bit, particularly you seven. And that, there's a DISC assessment. It's not the ideogram. It's not Myers-Briggs. It's just an opportunity to figure out how people work. One of the best thing, or one of the opportunities I've seen in a retreat was when we started using the word millennial, and I didn't understand what that meant. And what it meant was, generationally, we went from boomers through, until at that time shows you my age, well above Mayor Reed's age. That's thirty-two. Way, way. That millennial was, and it talked about cultural components of each and how how to communicate, what things were expected as far as structural organizational design, and what that meant then for the council I was working with because at the time, we had some new members who were some of the youngest people who had ever come on to Norfolk City Council. And the DISC assessment itself won't necessarily do that, but it will give you an opportunity as you lean into your first meeting, which will be this coming Tuesday, and you've got a Herculean schedule ahead of you that I'll give you a calendar this coming Tuesday that looks at the next couple of months. And God bless the General Assembly and some of the changes they've made, which I think has put an onus on city managers and also on city councils to get new people ready in a time when it becomes really, really important, which is the budget season. And so where we would normally have the July timeframe in the summer to really kind of, you know, relax and figure out, I think Ms. Timmer last evening spent some time with some of our finance folks to figure out how things go, and good for you. And I know others have, Mr. Deemer, Vice Mayor, you've taken ride-alongs. I apologize. We got you back in one piece. I understand that was kind of interesting. So the opportunity here is also to figure out your stories and how those are going to be important and how you do your business. And so with that, I'm going to transition into this next piece here, and I have some prepared introductory remarks from Mr. Keith. Now, please join me in welcoming Ron Keith. Ron is the president of Cross Dynamics, a faith-based training and consulting firm based in Chesterfield, Virginia. Ron partners with businesses and organizations to build custom training programs to help individuals and groups discover the benefits and power of working and living by dynamic principles. Mr. Keith has worked with such companies as the Virginia Association of Mortgage Brokers, where he served as their primary sales and marketing trainer consultant, the Maryland Association of Mortgage Brokers, Bank of America, Capital One, Coca-Cola Bottling Company, City of Richmond, Virginia State University, Norfolk State University, behold the green and gold, and the Virginia Lottery, and now the city of Lynchburg. He will be leading us in this DISC assessment. Before I turn it over to Ron, I'd like to just acknowledge Ann Seward, which doesn't want to be acknowledged. Ann was, has worn many hats in local governments throughout the Commonwealth. She has been instrumental throughout my career, and I'm honored to have her today as well and in our presence. So thank you, Ann. Ron, please. Where is Mr. Keith? There he is. Come on up, sir. All right.
How are you? Hold on. Let me give permission. Can I give permission first? I need your permission to be a little bit forward. Can I do that? Does that be okay? Can I, can I, you know, just pronounce a word and then talk about me and tweet? Is that acceptable?
Yes.
Can I, can I be a little bit casual? I'm actually going to unbutton my jacket and run them.
Okay, all right.
What I found is that if things go a little bit better, if people have that space, does that make sense?
Makes sense.
All right. So let's see. Let me quickly, nineteen eighty-eight, eighty-nine or so-ish?
Okay.
I'm at Virginia State University, and one of my best friends was quarterback on the football team. And he graduated, came back to homecoming, and told me he was working at Piccadilly Cafeteria. Now, you may not know what Piccadilly is. Thank you.
Sir.
You may not know what Piccadilly is, but you certainly know what a cafeteria is. And so here's a man who was quite candidly, not just an athlete, but a good, but a good student. And it was very evident to me, why would I want to graduate and spend all that money and incur student loans and then ask somebody, would you like gravy with your mashed potatoes? And so I decided then that I was not going to do that. And so I got, I see how many of you have been around for a while, a place called Signet Bank. Anyone remember Signet Bank? So I got a job at Signet Bank. I got a job at Signet Bank, sir, because I like money. And I get a suspicion that you, sir, also candidly like a little bit of money. So I got a job at Signet Bank, and I got a job in the Risk Operations Division where you work part-time. You came in at five o'clock, and you worked till nine. And I was a person on the phone saying, hi, my name is Ron Keith. Your account is currently five hundred dollars past due. Will you be making a payment today? And they would cuss me out and hang up. And, 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 you know, then I'd call back, and I'd get their voicemail with said, praise the Lord, we bless you for calling us. Some of y'all catch that going home. All right. Within eleven months, I got promoted to Evening Manager with a great mentor by the name of Elwood Thomas. Within eleven months, I got, so I was managing, my first time managing, I was still in college. And I had people who were forty and, I had college students who were my age. I had individuals who their transmission had blown in their car, and they just needed a part-time job to make some cash. And so I learned at a very early age how the importance of navigating people. And I was telling Ann yesterday as we were doing dinner, Signet Bank, if you know the story, Rich and Nigel actually were the consultants who then turned, took the credit card division from Signet and flipped it into what's now called Capital One, if you don't know that story. And so I was there, and Rich and Nigel made the flip. And Winter, they said, do you want to come and hang out with all these folks who are doing dynamic things or stay with these old guys where only you can wear blue and black suits, and someone has to die to get promoted? And I said, I'm going to go with Capital One. And they hired about fifty, thirty or so people one afternoon, and this is, this is true, and it's unreal. They didn't have a training plan. And since I was the rookie, they said, hey, rookie, go into this room, room like this, and everyone's sitting, and train them. And that's what I, when I learned that, wow, I have an, I have a gift for doing that. And so I wanted to share that with you, not because you care, but because I believe you need to know with whom you're laboring with. And so since very, very, very early on, I've been training for a while. And for there, I went into training for Capital One, Bank of America, and blah, 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 blah. And I do a ton of executive coaching, and I could not be more thrilled to come hang out with you guys today. So Winter, you my man, a hundred grand. I just think the world of you. So, and Ann could not think more of you. Thank you so much. She bought me the best tuna burger ever on the planet yesterday. So thank you so much. Thank you so much. All right. I have someone who's going to help me out. We're going to do, I'm going to, in the, in the words of the very famous James Brown, I'm going to hit it and quit it. I'm not going to be in front of you long, I promise. I have put together a staple of the probably every executive, every senior leader, every individual whose task with, quite candidly, overseeing, managing individuals probably needs to have in their staple, which is just a DISC assessment. It's tried and true. It's been done all over the world. And I did not bring the long version because that is quite, quite lengthy. What I brought with you with, what I brought today is the short version. So council, what I'd like for you to do is, first and foremost, put your name on the front of the book. That's your first instructions. Put your name, your AKA, your alias, what you'd like us to call you on the front of the book. And the reason for that, Winter, is simple. If you find it left after everyone leaves, you know who to go to. You find, you know who to go to. Good to meet you. Good to meet you. I like that jacket. Good to meet you, sir. Bow ties to stay with, sir. Good to meet you, sir.
Good to meet you, sir.
Good to meet you. I've already picked on you, so thank you. Sir. Good to meet you.
I didn't know. I didn't know. I didn't know.
All right, let's do it. So open up the book for me, and if you would, on the first page. Am I on the microphone? Am I on? Very good. On the first page, here's what I need you to do. There are uno, dos, tres, cuatro. There are four sections. Each section you're going to read, and you're going to answer the questions associated with each section. And so if you would, the first question says, someone help me out. What's the first question? Say.
I'm assertive, demanding, and decisive.
Ah, and you're going to answer by indicating one, two, three, or four. And you're going to try to answer that question as you really are, not as you hope to be. What that simply means is, you don't answer like, I really want to be assertive. You're going to answer it as you really truly are. Does that make sense? And so you're going to, once again, read each one of those statements, circle one, two, three, or four for each one of the questions associated with the statement. And then you're going to total up your answers, but just hold off on that, and I'll share with you how to go about doing that. Okay? Now, this is a no-cheat activity, which in essence means you cannot look to the left and or to the right to see what your neighbor is writing down, all right? And this stays with you, so you don't need to worry about this, quite candidly, getting out into the atmosphere. On your mark, get set, and go. Now, for those while they're doing that, and I know I have some folks in the room to kind of help you kind of keep up with where we're going, the first set of questions says, am I assertive, demanding, and decisive? The second, I enjoy doing multiple tasks at once. The third question, I thrive in a challenging, based environment. The fourth is, I think about tasks above others or myself. And the last in the first section says, I am motivated by accomplishing, by accomplishments and authority. Second quest, second set of questions says, I enjoy influence and inspiring people. Second says, I am optimistic about others. I tend to be the life of the party. I think about motivating people. I am motivated by recognition and approval. The next set of questions says, I thrive in consistent environments over challenging ones. I prefer specifics over generalizations. I enjoy small groups of people. I prefer being a member of a team over leading the team. I am motivated by stability and support. And then the last, the fourth, I typically do not take big risks. I love tasks, order, and details. I am right most of the time. I comply with, I comply with clarity, clearly defined rules, and I am motivated by quality and correctness. So those are the questions that they're answering. My father once gave me the secret to passing tests. He says, think long, think wrong. So don't, don't overthink them. Don't overthink them. Now, I see a few of you have finished. For those who have finished, what I'd like for you to do is for each section, so there's four sections, you're going to add up your score for each of the sections independently of each other. So the first section, you're going to add up your score, and then you're going to write that in the designated area that says total. And then you're going to do that for each of the four sections. So you're going to end up with four scores. So once again, for those who have finished, you're going to tally up your, your numbers of those, the numbers you've circled. You're going to place that information in the, in each of the sections, each of the four sections that correspond to the area. Give you a few more seconds. All right. So let's do some quick math together. So the highest score you can have in any section would be five, okay? So if you, and there's four questions in each section, so five times four is? No, there's five questions in each section. It's one, two, three, four, five. So five times five is? Twenty-five. So if you have twenty-six, that means you've added incorrectly. The lower score you can have in each section is one. So if you have four, that means you've added incorrectly. All right? All right. So I see a few people, Mayor, so you still working on yours? Keep, keep rolling. Keep rolling. Keep rolling. Give you another moment or two. Now, for those who have finished, what I'd like for you to do, as a few folks are still adding up their scores, would you put a star beside the number, beside the category, one, two, three, or four, where you have the highest score or where you may have a tie? So if you have twenty and twenty, you're going to put two stars beside those. But put a star beside the item or the number where you have the highest score, where you have the highest score. And if you have a tie, you're going to put a star beside both. Okay? So once again, look at your, your four scores, put a star beside your highest one. What I'd like you to do next, for those, once again, who are finished, put a circle, circle the score where you have the next highest score. So you're really looking for two things. You're looking for your highest score of scores, and then you're looking for your second highest score. You're going to put a circle beside that one. Very good. All right. So for number one, is everyone done? Is everyone done? Good to go. Good to go. Good to go. Good to go. All right. So if you would, beside number one, put the letter D as in David. Beside number one, put the letter D as in David. Beside number two, put the letter I as in inquiry. Beside number three, put the letter S as in Sam. And beside number four, put the letter C as in Charlie. So once again, beside number one, you're going to put D as in David. Beside number two, I as in inquiry. Beside number three, you're going to put S as in Sam. And then beside number four, you're going to put a C as in Charlie. Got it? All right. So let's, let's go around. Now, some of you have, I can tell by just peeking on your paper, you have duplicate scores, and that's not unusual. All right. So your highest score, give me your highest score. Is it one, two, three, or four? And the way you're going to answer is you're going to give me your highest score and then give me your letter. So Mayor, Councilman Wilder, can I start with you? Fantastic. What was your highest score, sir?
I had three ties.
Ah, that means, sir, that you are complicated. But in a good way.
Yeah.
In a good way. Okay, before I go there, there are no right or wrong on this, okay? So you're not better if you're one or the other. So can I just put that out in the atmosphere? Yes? Okay, so you get away from that. This, the DISC, is not one nine hundred, Ms. Chloe. It is not to give you your fortune. Does that make sense? Okay, that would be, that would be out of order to do in this setting, right? What it really does is it's just an indicator of your personality preferences. Okay, before I go any deeper, do you know that you probably, more often than not, park in the same area when you go to the store? You, you, and matter of fact, some of you get irritated if you can't find a space in your, in your preferred, preferred area. Do you not know that you tend to, in your closet or in your closet, you may have a lot of the same color clothing? Is that not true? Okay? Yes. Do you know that in your playlist, there's a lot of the same music? Same kind of genre. Does that make sense? Okay. So the reality of it is that most of you, I bet that some of you have gotten angry that you've gone to Walmart, and that toothpaste that you love dearly hasn't been in stock, and you don't know what to do with yourself with all the other toothpastes available to you. You have been frustrated and not known what to do. Is that not also factual? I get an amen. Hallelujah. Praise all around. All right. Very good.
I don't know if toothpaste would be the right example. I'm attached to using it.
And we appreciate that. All right. And you are right. My point I'm trying to convey is that all of us, whether we want to admit it or not, have these preferences. And these preferences, whether you realize it or not, they manifest themselves in how we engage the world and how we engage each other. Does that make sense? And so what the DISC really does, in essence, is what I want to try to just, just, just touch very, very quickly today is express to you that, that all of you have these preferences as leaders and as individuals who have tons of responsibilities, and those and those preferences manifest themselves. They're not good or bad, they're just your preferences. Okay, okay. My daughter comes to me and she says, "Daddy, the dog is barking and it's annoying me." And I say to her, sweetheart, first of all, the dog barking can't make you be annoyed. You choose annoyance.
My wife wouldn't like you.
I know. My wife doesn't like me sometimes either when I say these things. She says, "Stop using that psychology on me." Wait, 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 wait a minute, wait a minute. Have you ever said someone made you angry? Okay, that's technically not true. Anger is a choice you've chosen from a litany of options available to you. Because no one makes you anything. It's what you decide to be. Your preferences say anger is a choice to deal with the situation. Ooh, I'm in deep water. Pull your pants up so you won't get your socks wet. Do you get it? So my daughter says, wait, wait, my daughter says, "Dad, the dog is barking and that's annoying me." And I said, sweetheart, the dog barking can annoy you. The dog is just doing what it's designed, what the dogs do. They... So why would you be irritated by the dog simply doing what it's designed to do? Does that make sense?
You need a cat.
So you need to get a cat. Winter, you're my man. So you need to get a cat if barking. There you go.
Or you gotta feed the dog or take it out.
There you go. That's exactly right. That's exactly right. So leaders, 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 your success, your future, and we'll talk about this word called legacy and the impact you have, all contingent upon, and your ability to be the best version of yourselves, all is dependent upon your opportunity, your willingness to understand these concepts that I'm conveying. Make sense, make sense, make sense? Okay? All right. So the DIS is just a tool, quite candidly, to help you understand the preferences and how things, how people are candidly just simply designed. That's it. That's it. Now, you can fluctuate through all of these. So no matter what your high score is, depending on the opportunity and the situation, you can easily flip back between either one of these. Does that make sense? Okay? But given a ten times, six out of the ten, seven out of the ten times, if you will, you tend to be more of one or the other. Make sense? Okay. Very, very good. All right. So, exactly. All right. So now, let's go back. So your high score was, you had a tie, and you had three ties.
Yes.
And give me your three, give me your letters. D?
D.
Okay.
S.
Okay.
And C.
D, S, and C. And what was your scores in each one of those?
I'm twenty.
Ooh, that means you're strong in those. Okay. What was your high scores?
D.
Your high score in D. All right, very good. What was your high score?
I.
Ah, very good. Did you have a high score, sir?
I did not.
Okay. Your high score?
D was nineteen, I was eighteen, S was nineteen, C was nineteen.
So you had two, yeah, three nineteenths?
Three nineteenths and one eighteen.
Okay, give me your nineteenths again.
D, S, and C.
D, S, and C. Excellent. Your high scores?
I.
Ooh, very, very good. I'm an I, so I get that. And your high score?
I and C. Tie.
You had a tie between I and C. Okay, very good. All right. So let's tell you what those mean, what those mean. So if you would just flip your page one page over. I'm not gonna get into the ties yet, but let's tell you at least what those personality types, what the data has proven those to be. Now, once again, this is not reading your horoscope. It's giving you what tends to be the norm with people who fall in, so that the more, it's a better way to say it. When you look at the body of work done in this arena, people who fall into these categories, D, I, S, and C, tend to do these things more often. Let's do D's first. And for the sake of time, I'll read them. D's are direct and decisive. So where are my D's again? Hands up, D's? All right, very good. My D's are direct and decisive. They are risk-takers and problem solvers. They're more concerned with competing tasks and winning than they are with gaining approval from people. Through the internal drive, through the internal drive, tends to be, tends to make them insensitive to those around them. D's are not afraid to challenge the status quo, and they thrive when it comes to developing new things. They tend to, they need discipline to excel. They respond to direct confrontation. Their greatest fear of a D is to be taken advantage of and even despite their possible weaknesses, which include an aversion to routine, a tendency to overstep authority, an argumentative nature, and a habit of taking on too much. They place a high value on time and use their innovative thinking to accomplish difficult tasks and conquer challenges. Ladies and gentlemen, those are the tendencies of a D. Do you see at least one or two of those things that reflect you? Just a few? Just a few? Very good. Remember, I wanna stress, there's no good or bad. I wanna stress this, there is no good or bad, guys. And not all of these things will apply, but they should at least, you should say, okay, I see a little bit of that mean. Okay, I got a couple of I's. I know, Deemer, you're an I. I's are inspiring and impressive, enthusiastic, optimistic, impulsive, and emotional. They tend to be creative problem solvers and excellent encouragers. They often have a large number of friends, but they can become more concerned with approval and popularity than with getting results. And I's' greatest fear is rejection, but they thrive when it comes to motivating others. Their positive sense of humor helps them. Where are my I's again? Where are my I's again? I's, you got sense of humor?
There was, there was.
My wife doesn't think so.
Your wife doesn't?
Well, she's absolutely wrong.
Oh, my goodness. I's, a C, hold on. Though they can be attentive to details and sometimes poor listeners, they can be great peacemakers, effective teammates when they control their feelings and minimize their urge to entertain and be the center of attention. They value lots of human touch and connection. Those, ladies and gentlemen, that's some of the characteristics of an I. S, S, did it have any S's? Did it have any S? Okay, very good. You had a tie between a couple, right?
Yeah, me and Sterling are the same.
You and Sterling, you and Sterling had the same.
Complicated.
Sterling! You're complicated, sir. All right, in a good way. S's are sturdy and more reserved. Because they are steady and predictable, they do not like change. And they thrive in secure and non-threatening environments. They are often friendly and understanding, as well as good listeners and loyal workers who are happy doing the same job consistently. With an incredible ability to forgive, reliable and dependable, S's tend to make the best friends. Their greatest fear, however, is loss of security and their possible weakness naturally, actually clues, but not... Hold on. They can also be too sensitive to criticism and unable to establish priorities. In order to avoid being taken advantage of, S's need to be stronger and learn how to say no. They also like to avoid the limelight, but when given an opportunity to genuinely help others, they will gladly rise to the occasion. They feel more valued when they have truly helped someone. Ladies and gentlemen, those are some of the characteristics of an S. All right. Now, let's do the last one. C, I had a few Cs. Cs are compliant, analytical, careful, logical, lines of thinking, drive them forward, and accuracy is a top priority. They hold high standards and value systematic approaches to people problems. They, though they thrive when given opportunities to find solutions, they tend to ignore the feelings of others. It can often be critical and downright crabby. Ladies and gentlemen, that would be a C. The C's biggest fear is criticism, and their need for perfection, to be perfectionist, is often a weakness as their tendency to give in when in the midst of an argument. However, they are thorough in all activities and can bring a conscientiousness, even temperate element to the team when provided solid grounding. They value being correct the most. All right. So those, ladies and gentlemen, are the D, the I, the S. And I would venture to say, this test has been done a ton of times. It tends to be pretty spot-on. Tends to be pretty good, especially if he answers questions. Okay, so now, you tend to have two quadrants, okay? So you tend to be dominant in one, and you also tend to have what they call a secondary. So because we didn't do the full-blown, which would give you both, and some of you have a tie. Tie is fine, especially on this short version. Having a tie is fine. Okay? So what I'd like for you to do is to go back and look at your numbers again, and we're gonna try to narrow you down just a tad as to where you are. Okay? So can we start with, tell it with you? All right. So, Councilman Vertell, if you would go to your scores again, what was your highest score again?
My two highest score, two and, what is that? I and C.
So your highest scores is I and C. So the I in you, sir, is going to be... The I's you is going to be that inspiring, impressive, enthusiastic, optimistic, and what's yours, and your next one is a C?
Mm-hmm.
Your C is compliant and analytical. What would you say about that, sir?
Somewhat.
So the I is what we call the influence, and the C is what we call conscientiousness. So you tend to lean more to those two areas.
Yes.
So given all of the factors being equal, those are gonna be probably your go-to moves. Does that make sense?
It makes sense.
Okay. So the I in you says, "Trust me, I'll work it out."
Yes.
The C in you says, "How was it done in the past?"
Yes.
Rest my case. Make sense, make sense, make sense?
Makes sense.
You gotta say it twice like me. Make sense, make sense, make sense?
Makes sense, makes sense, makes sense.
There you go.
That was three times.
You get it? All right. What was your highest score?
I.
Ooh, so the I in you, now, are you an extrovert?
Well, I'm an introvert of extrovert, so I like to be alone. But when I'm amongst people, I'm all-on.
Got it. My daughter's like that. And so I'm actually an introvert. Most people don't, I actually can just turn it on, so I guess. So that's good. So the I in you has a little extrovert in you. And what was your other highest score?
Then it was a tie between D and C.
Ah. So you tell me, is it more D, let's do it now? Or is it more accuracy, careful, compliant, logical, perfectionist, and precise? Which one would be your pick?
I think it's a balance between the two.
Okay. Okay, good.
A little bit of both.
Good. And that's probably why it's a tie. Very, very good. All right, your highest score? D. D is a control, power, assertive, inquisitive, and a self-starter. Very good. And did you have a second highest?
I did. I just went straight down, nineteen, eighteen, seventeen, sixteen. So, DI.
So your I is your next highest?
Yes.
Your I is, trust me, I'll work it out. You have a little extrovert in you, too?
On occasion.
On occasion?
Yeah.
Okay. Social situations per...
It turned off after November. I've gotta get it back.
Persuasive, positive, communicative are some of the characteristics of an I. Very good, very good. Sir, your highest score was a D, I believe, yes?
Yes, one of the highest, yes.
One of the highest, and then you had a tie?
Yes.
What was your second tie?
It was, well, all the other was S and C.
Was it S and a C?
Yes.
Okay. So the D in you, direct, strong, confident, strong-willed. Would that be reasonable?
Yeah, I think that's reasonable, yes, sir.
Okay. And then the C? The C, ooh, the C. Now, here's why you're complex. Because you have that, but the C, you also have in you some gentleness. You can be accommodating. You can be sensitive to others. Is that true?
I think so, yes, sir.
There you go. All right. Who've I missed? Who've I missed?
Winter.
You know what? I didn't make Winter do this. We're gonna have to make, I should've made Winter. I had to make, we gotta get in a, we have to make one for Winter to do. All right. What was your highest score?
I was also a high I was my high, and then I tied on D and C.
Yeah, so I was your highest?
Yes, sir.
I was your highest. So, so once again, the I's is sociable, talkative, cheerful, lively, friendly, are some of the characteristics of an I, okay? And then you say C?
Yes. D and C tied.
And you had a tie between D and C?
Yes, sir.
Hmm, now, C, we'll go with D. D can be direct, strong, forceful, and strong-willed. Okay? And your high score?
D, S, C.
Ooh, D, S, C. Now, many of you have high scores, and this is very common in senior-level executives and people in leadership positions such as yours. And the reason is because you have naturally learned how to navigate through some of these based on situations. Does that make sense? So because you're constantly faced with ongoing, you have to make more decisions than most people do in a week, in a day. True? And you have to learn how to make very difficult decisions, decisions that may very well be unpopular. And you have to make decisions that could actually be in the newspaper. Most executives don't have to do that. Does that make sense? So, so, so...
Thanks, Mike.
So you have to make those type of decisions. And so you've learned how to, so it's not uncommon when I do this in this type of environment to have multiple scores. Outside of this, people tend to have usually one. They don't have as many ties.
I'm gonna take the source.
Fair enough.
So, so the D in you and the I, that's not uncommon to have those ties. Now, go to, go to page three in that book. Go to page three in that book. It should say, "Opportunity for growth." What is the purpose of practice? What is the purpose of practice?
To get better, improve.
Say what?
Improvement.
To improve. Okay, good. So who is your favorite sports figure? Or one that you just, maybe not a favorite one that you know? Or your favorite singer, your favorite author?
Reggie White.
Reggie was good, man. That's a good call.
Kobe Bryant.
Ooh, another good one.
Kobe.
Kobe. That's a good one. Those are really two good ones. I don't hear those a lot. Most people don't think about Reggie. Reggie was really strong.
Minister of Defense.
Yes, he was. Um, so all of those individuals, no matter who you may have chose, whether you came out or not, so, so they all practice. So how could people at the top of their game, the Reggie Whites, the Kobe Bryants, your favorite singer, right? How could they practice and most executives don't? Usually in many organizations, in many, in many entities, some of the least trained individuals are the executives. Because they get to a certain place, winter, and they become busy with stuff, and they stop practicing. When practicing is the key, becoming better is the key to, to not just sustaining where you are, but becoming better. Is that not true? So Kobe becomes better after year one. If you go back and watch Kobe, his first year, he misses the shot in the playoffs. He shoots an air ball, and, uh, he goes back and he starts practicing, um, so that that never happens again. He also tells a story, Kobe tells a story of how he, he, he's filed, uh, he plays against the Miami Heat, and that he's, he has the chance to make the winning shot, and they hit him on the elbow and he misses the shot. And so Dwyane Wade, who's a star of the Miami Heat, is celebrating, and they go in the locker room, winter, and they take their shower, and they're leaving all puffed up because they've won the game against the Lakers. And they, they hear noise in the, in the stadium, and they walk and they see Kobe Bryant with the coach practicing hitting him on the elbow and making the shot. Many executives don't, they have a failure, or they have an opportunity where things don't go the way, the outcome they achieve, but they don't go back and practice. And so it's, practice is critical to your ongoing future and success. And so, um, if you go to that page I just asked you to, how can you, um, how can, opportunities for growth? Look at each one of those letters. Pick your dominant one, and I know for many of you had a tie, but just pick one. So let's do D, for example. D's, you're dominant, you're direct, you're task-oriented, you're decisive, you're organized, you're outgoing. These are all your positives, but here are ways you can actually grow and practice on being better. Strive to listen to others more attentively. Uh, can I just take a second and park there for a second? Listening is a, my grandmama used to say I was hard of hearing, but that was not true. Actually, I was hard of listening. Because I heard what she said, but I choose not to listen. Does that make sense? Listening is a conscious decision. You make the quiet inner voice and give ownership over to the individual speaking. Most executives that I deal with, I do a ton of executive coaching, they are not strong in that space. Because they are, they are very, very accustomed to giving answers, and, and they have short attention spans because their days are so busy, and they're so just inundated with things that they find it challenging sometimes to quiet the inner voice and give ownership over to someone else. It's actually a technique that you have to practice. And if you don't practice that technique, you won't be hard of, 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 of hearing, you'll be hard of listening. And listening is a tool. So if there's any, if there, I can give you just some takeaways from today's to help you make this, this, this year just a phenomenal year, practice in that space. Does that make sense? So that's one of my growth work tools I want to give you for 2025. If we can work on just that alone, you'll be 10 times better. There's no relationship you can't improve to some degree if you improve listening. There's, now, I can't say I go from a, a one to a 10, but it can go from a one to a two. Does that make sense? And so there's very few relationships can't be en, en, enhanced and, 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 and developed in some way if listening. Does that make sense?
I mean, obviously, lack of communication is a complete failure.
Correct. Correct, 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 correct. So my father was a psychologist and, um, um, and counsel, my father used to say, "Quiet the inner monkey." And I would say, "The inner monkey?" And my daddy calling me a monkey, he was, and he wasn't. What he was telling me is, that monkey was the inner voice popping around in my head while my daddy was talking to me. And so he would say, he would say, he would say, "Cage that monkey, son. Cage that monkey." And, and it helped me to remember, and so all my career, I learned how to cage the monkey. Now, y'all can't say that to each other, okay? Because that could be offensive and, yes. So please don't, yes. But that really is, it helped me to understand visually, get the concept of that inner voice. Now, um, some of you, that inner voice is talking to you right now. So some of you saying, "Ooh, I wonder how much longer Ron's gonna be." "Ooh, I don't like that suit he has on. Ooh, I wonder if we gonna get something other than Chick-fil-A for lunch today." "Man, these seats are hard. Man, I should've worn the wrong suit."
I'm just wondering when you're gonna take the jacket off.
I know, right?
Because that's what you said you were gonna do.
I did, I did say that. So, so, so that inner voice is always operating, and one of the things I want to help, especially for my D's and for all of you, is, is we gotta get better in that space. So there's a difference between hearing and difference between listening. All right, just for the sake of that, let's move on a little bit. Uh, D's, go to my I's. I's, weigh the pros and cons before making a decision. Be less impulsive. Remember to help others with tasks more. Exercise control over actions, words, and emotions. Those are all growth opportunities and where areas to practice if you are an I, ways to improve. Go to my S's. S's, consider how change is healthy, uh, develop, deal with confrontation constructively. By the way, you're supposed to have confrontation. Where have you ever brought two people together and there wasn't confrontation? Hold on, even my best friend, we have some confrontation. We just know how to navigate through it. Does that make sense? You are supposed to have confrontation. What you're not supposed to have is not supposed to hinder you from success. Confrontation can't be greater than success, because then confrontation is, is more important than success, and that should never be the outcome. True, 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 true. So you're not supposed, yeah, so, so, uh, that should, that, that should not be something that we should be, uh, fearful of. For my, uh, S's, S's, be more direct in your interactions. Develop more, develop more flexibility. Try to show more initiative. Those are all opportunities for my S's. And then for my C's, I had a couple of ties with C's. Respond more quickly to accomplish, respond more quickly to accomplish others' goals. Hmm. Be more decisive, focus less on facts and more on people. Those are all opportunities for my C's. Get it? Got it? We'll close out with this. Last page in your book.
Wait, uh, Ron, so Winter, do you wanna take me a real question?
Woo, Winter's in the, Winter's in the game. He said, "Let's go." Winter, give me your highest score.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
Two, two.
Twenty-five and two.
Twenty, twenty-five, twenty-five, fifteen, fifteen.
All right, so you-
I went straight down, DI. Is that how, D I S?
D I S C.
That makes so much.
That makes so- They're all, your whole team's over here. I wonder what Winter is. So Winter, ladies and gentlemen, is a D, his strongest is a D, then he's a, he's a DI, and he's a DI. He's tied with DI, so he's, he's a DI.
And then S and then a C.
Yeah.
Those are two ties.
So you're, so Winter is a strong, a very strong DI. So you're direct all day, all night, and you're influence. So, um, you're the doer and the talker.
I should say no more.
We're all sitting on our shock face.
Y'all wanna go, yeah. He's the doer and the talker. That's what the B is, the doer, and the I is the talker. Oh, my goodness. All right, go to your last page of the book, and we'll close out our time again. So I want to recommend, um, I'm a huge, I'm a huge book guy, and so I want to recommend some reading for the, for the team. There's a book called The Eight Dimensions of Leadership by Jeffrey Sugerman, uh, S-U-G-E-R-M-A-N. And I put this, uh, it's, it's listed at the head area of the, of that last page. Highly, highly recommend that book. And the book takes the disc that I just went over with you, goes into it a little bit, a lot more detail, quite candidly, and then it attaches to it these eight concepts of leadership, how they, how they intertwine and work with each other. So I, I highly, highly suggest that. Um, I think that, uh, the book, reading a book is one of the ways you can cheat. You can get someone else's information, right? So what the, the book, what Jeffrey does in his book is he says, depending on where you are, a D, the I, the S, or the C, there's these eight concepts of leadership. For the sake of time, I'm just gonna deal with four of them really, really quickly. Um, the first one, um, um, if you look at this, and I know I have some people who, who don't, so the, 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 the visual here is a circle with a T in the middle, uh, with an X, uh, in the middle, if you will, and the top of it is pioneering. The, the bottom is humble. To the left is result, is, uh, resolute, and to the right is affirming. And so what I'd like to do is just quickly just talk about four of those areas. Um, if you are in that D space, if you're in that D space, and many of you are in, uh, the D space, um, that means you're probably going to be pioneering. Um, and now you're gonna be pioneering, and you're gonna either fall on the side of more resolute or affirming. And I'll tell you what those means in a second. If you're down in the C or the S is your highest score, I don't have many of you that that's your highest score. You're more humble, and then you have to deal with resolute and affirming on that. Um, and remember, there's no right or wrong here. So I'm gonna just probably deal with pioneering, because most of you are up in that upper echelons of the D and the I. Okay? All right, so what does that mean? Pioneering means, at their best, leaders, leaders, this was what pioneering means, at their best, pioneering means that you are bold, you're a passionate leader who inspires others to take chances on new directions. However, at your worst, you can be impulsive, overconfident, uh, who uses their charm to gain support in wild ideas. So you gotta be able to manage your, your, you gotta be able to manage your superpower. What's, what's, what was Superman's greatest power? What was Superman's greatest power? It is a trick question, so hang in. Say it again.
I would say blending in.
Ooh, you got an A for today, sir. That's good. It's not the right answer, but that's good. That is really, that's the first time I've asked that in a line. That's the first time that's really, really good. But you're close. He's like, super close. What's Superman's greatest power?
I'd say X-ray vision.
He wanna see things he can't see, see, you hear? I like that. Actually, I'm gonna stick with you. I'm gonna switch that. It's blending in. It's actually his humility, his ability to blend in. His ability to not be-
His humanity.
Yes, his ability to not be Superman in a grocery store. Now, I say that and people laugh, but it's true. Many people, if you were Superman, you couldn't be Superman because you would be Superman in a grocery store. You don't need to be Superman in a grocery store.
Clark Kent.
You need to be Clark Kent. That's exactly right. So, so with the pioneering, and I use that analogy because with the pioneering, that is your directness, your, that is your, your ability to pioneer new things. That is your strength, but it's also your kryptonite if you don't manage it correctly. If you don't manage it correctly, okay? Now, humble at the best, modest, fair-minded leaders who provide reliable outcomes through steadiness and consistency. At their worst, they can be rigid, overly cautious leaders who are afraid to move beyond the status quo. See the difference? And so humble is good, but it can also have a kryptonite element to it as well. Does that make sense? And then the two variables on the side, the resolute and the affirming. The affirming is, at their best, they can, affirming means I'm kind, I'm supportive leader who works to create a respectful and positive environment. But at my worst, um, I can be conflict diverse, um, and I can fail to hold others accountable. Again, the kryptonite element. And then resolute means, uh, at my best, I can be an independent leader who's, who's not afraid to take on the status quo. But at my worst, I can be insensitive and somewhat cynical. Uh, and, uh, and that can be the kryptonite there. So leaders, I'll leave you with this. Um, the disc is really just an introduction to help you understand the, the variance between all of you is sup, isn't supposed to be. It's supposed to be there. And it's just the, it's just your, your preferences on how you see the world and how you navigate, um, the conflicts that you deal with each and every day. And your grade is, uh, if you look, if you read some of the additional documents that read further some of the information in the booklet, you'll see that I give you some other tips on how to navigate others who are D and who are an I, so that you can achieve the outcomes that you want to achieve. In the words of the famous rabbit, that, that, that's all, folks, and I'm gonna turn it back over to Winter.
Oh, uh, Ron, thanks so much. That, that was definitely a, a whirlwind. I know, Ron, that that usually is a bit more time, and, uh, thank you, counsel, for, uh, kinda squeezing all that in and moving kinda quickly. We are tracking time right on. Uh, we're gonna take a break here. Uh, the next up is, uh, Holly and Sean at, uh, I think 10, is that right? 10, 10 o'clock? So we have 15 minutes to powder your noses, refresh your coffees, get a little something else to eat, stretch your legs. Uh, so we'll be right back here at 10 a.m. So welcome back. Um, you guys know Dr. Holly Jennings and Sean. Sean, how, how many years have you worked for the city? Because you're in a very, very new role, but it was 17?
Just over 17 years.
17 years. Wonderful, wonderful. Uh, Dr. Jennings, a little bit less than that. Um, new title that, uh, that she has. You can see there, uh, so I have Dr. Holly Jennings, Special Assistant to the City Manager for Data, and I have Sean Conway, Data Analyst. The two of them are gonna tell you a story. This is, um, this knocked my socks off when I saw it. Uh, this was, uh, yesterday, and I, I, I call it, now my, my watermark for, um, data analysis is, is it a Sean-like product. I use those words, because he does a really good job. So I'd be remiss for these, uh, remarks if I didn't read them, because people take time to pen them for me. Holly and Sean have prepared a look into Lynchburg through the eyes of data. I think you will find that their presentation will help us further understand our city and how the numbers tell the story. We will see assets, trends, patterns, and insights to help support your future decision-making and the broader narrative behind the data. Thank you, Holly and Sean. Question, discussion throughout, uh, Holly has a handout that summarizes what you will see today, and, and she'll give you those afterwards to put into your book, because, um, I've learned from Dr. Jennings, who's spent quite a bit of time in, um, uh, education, that, uh, I've learned, um, I'm that student that if she gives me something ahead of time, I'm going to leaf through it while she's talking. And so she has taught me that I will get her work product afterwards, after I've paid attention and listened. If, if there was one thing I heard from Mr. Keith, amongst married, married of things, uh, was, uh, the ability to listen. So with that, Dr. Holly Jennings, Sean?
Thank you, sir.
Welcome.
We appreciate it. So good morning.
Good morning.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, the rest of council. We're super excited to be here. Um, welcome to everyone, especially the new members. We hope that you didn't look at your agenda this morning and see two hours of data and think, oh, boy, let's maybe sleep in today. Because Sean and I have worked really hard to make it interesting and engaging and hopefully informative, um, and give everyone just a different perspective of how we look at things in the city. And this is the first time Sean and I are coming before you to really kinda do a data presentation, so we didn't want to bore you to sleep right off the bat. Um, I know most of you know me and have met me. I don't know that everyone knows Sean, so I want to take just a couple of seconds to introduce Sean. Both of us are huge introverts, so bear with us as we stand up and give presentations. Um, Sean's a JMU grad. Winter already said he worked for the city over 17 years. Uh, he has been in our GIS department. He has been in IT. He's one of the smartest people I've ever worked with. And a lot of what we do together, he's like the Wizard of Oz. He's behind the scenes and making it all happen. So he's super excited to be out front today with me. So y'all be, be good to my good friend Sean here, because he's very excited to be out talking to people. And what we will do, um, is we're gonna walk through, Sean's gonna do what I call the three Ps. He's gonna talk about the people who live in Lynchburg, the property we have in Lynchburg, and then, um, the pets we have in Lynchburg. And if you think I'm kidding, when you kinda have a fun fact screen, we'll tell you which ward is winning as having the most pets. Um, and then I am gonna finish this out with kinda walking through, um, the, the day and looking at city services, maybe through the eyes of a citizen. And again, keep in mind, we tried to make it a little fun, so it might be a little different than the presentations that you're used to. And all throughout our presentation, just because he couldn't help himself, Greg Patrick's gonna jump in and do some takeaways, so. Um, he's just gonna kinda participate from there, um, but we will have some discussion time. So with that, Sean is gonna kick us off and do a little bit of a ward overview, just to kinda orient us and those that will be watching this recording later as we're talking about War One, War Two, exactly where that is in the city. So I'm gonna hand it over to Sean.
Sean, that's a, uh, limit you just yet, I just wanna make sure, counsel, please, uh, to the degree that you've got questions about, it's gonna be dense, right? There's gonna be some things you're like, um, Dr. Wilder or Mr. Taylor, Ward Two, at some point, uh, you're gonna see that during the day has a certain population, uh, or has a, it has a certain population, and during the day, because of, uh, work and what have you, it grows by 20,000 people. So there are things that you're gonna go, "Good gravy, I'm gonna ask a question," and that's gonna happen across the city. So please jump in and where necessary, please ask some questions. Sean?
Thank you. Uh, so as Holly mentioned, uh, we're gonna be sharing with you a lot of data today. Uh, data's gonna be shared at citywide level, but also at, at a ward level. So we thought it'd be really beneficial just to review those wards with you before we jumped into it, just as a refresher. Uh, Holly also had the great idea on all the slides going forward. We'll have a little ward map in the lower-left corner. So just in case you need that reference going forward, it's gonna be on the majority of our slides as well. Uh, so the city of Lynchburg is just shy of 50 square miles, and it's composed of four different wards. Those wards have gone through some pretty minor changes through the decennial census and redistricting process since 2000, but they've remained relatively the same for a pretty long time. Uh, so we'll start off with Ward One, and Ward One is on the northern part of the city. And it starts over in the Rivermont area by Randolph College, follows the northern boundary of the city all the way over to the western boundary of the city along Boonesboro Road. It passes through the 501 and 221 corridor, uh, by the Fresh Market Shopping Center, and then it ends finally down at the Gravesmill Interchange with 221 and the expressway. And, uh, we always say Ward One, we noticed in the data, is primarily a residential, uh, ward in the city of Lynchburg. Moving on to Ward Two, uh, Ward Two, uh, contains the oldest part of the city of Lynchburg. And so for that reason, you have a high concentration of city facilities in Ward Two. So you have both of the water treatment plants, both the freshwater and the wastewater treatment plants. You have City Hall. The new LPD, uh, police quarters are, our headquarters are also located in Ward Two, as well as the Public Works Facility is located in Ward Two. You also have a couple of shopping districts with downtown, as well as the Plaza, and it's home to EC Glass, and of course, Lynchburg General Hospital is located in Ward Two. Moving on to Ward Three, Ward Three is pretty unique, and that's a, it's a really diverse ward. Uh, there's residential parts of Ward Three, whether that be Cornerstone or the Leesville Road, Ward's Ferry area, or south of Ford Avenue. There's also the shopping districts of, uh, Ward's Road Corridor and the Mall. But really, it's high density and education. So not only do you have Heritage High School and LCA, we also have CBCC and Liberty University within Ward Three. Looking at Ward Four, it's probably the oddest-shaped ward out of all the wards. Uh, it stretches all the way from the northeast at, uh, Virginia Baptist Hospital, and it flows through the center part of the city, right past University of Lynchburg, and makes its way out the Graves Mill Corridor, uh, to the Winters community on the, on the border with the county. Uh, it also includes three of the city's industrial parks around the Graves Mill Corridor area. So hopefully that gives a pretty good overview of the wards and where they're located and some of the assets within them.
Based off your analysis, before we jump into the center numbers, what would you say is actually, both from an economical and, um, maybe even, all-star economical, uh, what's the most diverse ward?
I think we're gonna hit that number a little bit later, at least from a property perspective, we'll, we'll show that. Um, so that'll come up in one of our later slides. Um, but in terms of property, I think Ward Three is probably the most diverse in terms of just, um, variance of different types of properties that are located there. So we'll jump back over to the presentation. All right, so our goal today through data is not just to give you a whole bunch of data, but tell a couple of different stories about, uh, the city of Lynchburg through these data sets. We're gonna start off with looking at some demographic data and hopefully tell a couple of, uh, unique stories about the people of the city of Lynchburg. So who lives here? How many people live here? Where do they live, and what are some characteristics about the residents of the city of Lynchburg? We're also gonna talk about housing throughout the city of Lynchburg. Again, how much housing do we have? Where is it located? Is it rent or occupied, owner occupied? And then we're gonna show you some metrics about affordability of housing as well. We're also gonna jump into income, describe, uh, both at a personal level and a household level, uh, how much people bring it home annual, on an annual basis. And we're gonna tell a story about our vulnerable population, so those people who may be experiencing poverty, poverty, or benefits, or, um, may be experiencing poverty or benefits or elderly aging population as well. And then, as Holly mentioned, there were just, there's a lot of data that we went through. There's just some really cool facts that we came across, or intriguing, curious facts that we came across that didn't really fit into any of these other stories, and we thought they were still valuable to share, so we just have kind of a fun fact slide to share with everybody at the end of the demographic part of the presentation. So with that, we'll go ahead and jump into the people. And as we go through this data, again, we'll be sharing information about the city of Lynchburg as a whole, and then breaking it out by ward. But we wanted to provide some additional context and not just look at the city of Lynchburg by itself. And so we chose to also look at Roanoke and Charlottesville, just for comparison. We chose Roanoke and Charlottesville because they're also cities, so they provide a similar level of service as the city of Lynchburg. They're relatively close. I think Roanoke's about 50, 60 miles away, and Charlottesville's just about 70 miles away. And they're also similarly sized in terms of population. So looking at the Weld and Cooper Population Study, I think it's like Roanoke's nine, Lynchburg's 11, Charlottesville 13. So very comparable cities. And as we go through the presentation, I may repeat it a lot, but Roanoke and Lynchburg have a very similar number when we look at some of the demographic data, especially when we go into housing and income data. So we'll start off by looking at total population. You can consider total population your residents of the city of Lynchburg. And so Lynchburg projected for 2024 is just above 80,000, with Roanoke around 99,000, and Charlottesville just shy of 46,000 residents. Something that I noticed this morning when reviewing the data, Lynchburg is projected to increase by 2029 by just shy of 1,000, whereas Roanoke and Charlottesville are both expected to decrease a couple of hundred in population. And in 2015, just for some context, the city of Lynchburg was about 77,500 people in population, so we have seen some growth over the last nine or 10 years. Breaking that out by ward, kind of as expected, our wards are relatively balanced in terms of population, hovering around that 20,000 resident mark. And we think we could tell a story about the population of Lynchburg without hitting on daytime population. And so what this does is this gives a good idea of the true number of people who may be relying on city services during a working day. So these are people who are still going to use public safety if they're there, and they have an emergency while they're in the city working, people who use our infrastructure and travel our city streets. And you'll see that pretty similarly across Roanoke, Lynchburg, and Charlottesville, it increases about 20,000 people during a working day. The story gets pretty interesting when we dig into this by ward. You'll see that Ward One decreases in population. Again, we've kind of hit on that point, that Ward One's your residential ward, so people are leaving Ward One to work, and other wards are outside of the city.
Are they better done by design over the years?
What's that?
Better than done by design through land use over the years? I mean, if you think about it.
I'm not sure. That could be a potential reason, but I think the wards have been relatively stable for a long time, at least their boundaries, but that's something we can look into. As Winter mentioned, Ward Two increased by a pretty significant amount. It increases by 24,000 people on any given workday, where Ward Three and Ward Four spend, are relatively the same, with a decrease in Ward Four and a slight increase in Ward Three. Yes?
If you don't have this information now, an email would be fine. Be curious to see the total, if you can project it. Most would indicate Ward Three right away, but I'd be curious about Ward One and Four, and Two for that matter, student population, how that influences the population of each ward.
Perfect segue. That's our next topic. So because we have such a high concentration of higher education in the city of Lynchburg, we wanted to look at what the Census calls group quarters, and that's kind of their fancy way of saying anyone who lives in kind of institutional housing. So whether that is college dormitories, incarceration at the Blue Ridge Regional Jail, or in assisted living facilities. So it is college population on campus in dormitories, not off campus in, say, just student housing or student apartments. It's on-campus dormitory population. So group quarters is a pretty good metric for estimating college pop, on-campus college population. And you'll see that Lynchburg has about 10,500 residents who are considered to be group quarter population. And compared to Roanoke and Charlottesville, Roanoke and Charlottesville both come in around 2,000. We found that really curious for Charlottesville because of UVA, so we looked into that number a little bit more. And surprising to me, a large portion of UVA's campus is actually not in the city of Charlottesville, it's in Albemarle County. So we think that's why that number's a little bit lower than expected. And then looking at, interestingly, with group quarters population, when we get to some of the income data going forward, you're going to see a real impact on some of the income metrics because of group quarters. So people who live in group quarters don't count towards median household income, but they do count towards individual income, which is one of the reasons we're going to see a disparity there. So I just wanted to prep you for that when you saw some of those income metrics. And looking at group quarters by ward, expectably Ward Three has the highest amount of group quarter population, followed closely by Ward Four with University of Lynchburg. We thought it'd also be interesting to look at the median age for our residents here in the city of Lynchburg. We are younger than Roanoke at, we have a median age of 32, but we're slightly older than Charlottesville, who has a median age of 30. Breaking out that by ward, Ward One is, has the highest median age at 38.3 years, and Ward Three, younger population, again, indicative of Liberty University and college age population at just shy of 24 years of age. So moving on from people, we thought it'd be really interesting to tell a story about housing in the city of Lynchburg as well. And so some of the metrics we chose for that is all going to be based around this idea of a housing unit, which, again, is just a census term for dwelling. So you can think of that as your apartment, your house duplex, or a townhouse, a condo. The city of Lynchburg has a housing stock of about 35,000 housing units, which is lower than Roanoke, but higher than Charlottesville. And looking at that by ward, the highest number of housing units are in Ward Two, just shy of 10,000 housing units, with Ward Three coming in at the lowest number of housing units, at just about 6,500 housing units. And we thought we wanted to understand housing units a little bit further, so we took a look at owner versus renter occupied housing. So what percentage of housing on the left is owner occupied versus renter occupied on the right? And again, you'll notice that Lynchburg and Roanoke are very similar here, with 50% being owner occupied, 50% being renter occupied. The story gets a little bit more interesting when you look at this by ward. Ward One predominantly owner occupied housing at 62%, when the complete mirror for Ward Two, that's the complete opposite. So Ward Two is 38% owner occupied and a higher percentage of renter occupied housing. And so just for a little bit of context, in 2010, these numbers were slightly less for renter occupied housing for all areas, and a slight increase between 2010 and 2020, and it's remained relatively stable since 2020 for the percent of renter occupied housing, with the exception of Ward One. Ward One reverses that trend. It's actually increased two percentage points for owner occupied housing and decreased two percentage points for renter occupied housing. We also wanted to share with you some measures that may speak towards affordability of housing in the city of Lynchburg, because that's a critical component. Lynchburg median rent, so whenever you see the word median, just think 50% of the rent values are going to be above that, 50% of the rent values are going to be below that. Lynchburg comes in at $947 a month for median rent, which, again, is pretty comparable to Roanoke, and we are cheaper than Charlottesville, which is about $1,500 a month. Yes?
So this dovetails from the previous set of data that you had, which was related to group housings, how you phrased it. I'll go over here for the friends with the microphones, sorry. This dovetails to the question I had related to group housing and then rent. So I'd be curious, of the group housing, how much are senior communities? Because Ward Four has a number of those type of housing units. Second to that, would the rent associated in this number be driven by those as well? So I would, I'd be interested if I could pull the summit out, for example, you know, I really don't believe, not disputing the numbers, but I would pull that number out of Ward Four because I would want to see how much of those senior housings, which are very, very high cost, how that would then change the data on the backend for the rest of Ward Four, as an example. Thank you.
And looking at median rent by ward, we have Ward Two with more affordable rent, $702 a month, and Ward Three with the highest rent at about, median rent, just over $1,100. That gives you a good perspective of affordability for renters, but we thought we should also share some information about owners. And one way that you can show that through data is the percent, an estimate of the percent of your income that you spend on your mortgage. And so again, Roanoke and Lynchburg are very similar, just around 28%. You'll see we are cheaper than Charlottesville at 44.2%. And Ward Two and Ward Three, again, Ward Two having more affordable owner housing stock with percent of income being 19%, and Ward Three being closer to 30% of your income. So that is a relationship between your income and mortgage. Moving on from people and housing, we also wanted to hit on income. And so in the city of Lynchburg, the median household income is just over $54,000 per year, compared to Roanoke, again, very similar, about $51,000, and a little bit less than Charlottesville, which is closer to $70,000 a year. When we look at this information by ward, Ward One comes in at $75,000 a year for your median income, and you have Ward Two at $38,111. And this number is pretty diverse across all the wards. A lot of times you kind of see one outlier, but each one of the wards has a pretty different value here for the median household income.
Sorry, I have another question.
Yeah.
Holly, on the backend, if you could pull Ward Four by zip code, I'd appreciate it. Ward Four is incredibly diverse in numerous ways. There are three different zip codes, and Precinct 404 would most closely be aligned with Ward One, and so that would also impact that number for the population throughout the rest of the district.
Got it.
Going back to what you were saying about, or how it just geographically looks, your ward starts downtown and goes all the way out to Ward Row. Yeah, so I get that.
I was trying to make a point by asking, what's the most diverse district? And if you notice, I don't believe one of Ward Four's numbers have been highlighted, which is an argument to say Ward Four. Numerous different metrics could be said as one of the more diverse areas outlined in the city.
Yes.
Ward Three has got the second lowest median income. Is that including the students?
So it does not include folks who live in group quarters, is just a good point.
Okay, I just want to make that clear.
Yeah. And you'll see, when we move into individual income, the city of Lynchburg is about $29,000 in per capita income per year, which is a little bit lower than Roanoke and Charlottesville, with Ward One being the highest at just shy of $42,000 a year per capita, and Ward Three being 19,000. So in individual income, those folks who are living in group quarters are included. So that's why you see a pretty drastic drop between your household median income and your individual median income there. Then we could also look at disposable income, and so how this is described is the income that you take home after taxes, and this follows a similar trend to the median household income, with Ward One being just above $57,000 a year, and Ward Two being about $31,500 So moving on from income, we've looked at income, housing, and people. Now we're going to talk about vulnerable population. So you can kind of consider this as a population that may be most in need of services during an emergency. So you think about the snow and the winter storm that we just had this weekend, these are folks who may reach out and need services, who may not have other means to assist themselves. Household poverty is one measure of that, and this is the percentage of households that are below the federal poverty level. And city of Lynchburg's at 17%, with Roanoke at 18%, just a little bit less than Charlottesville at 21. Looking at the wards, we have Ward Two and Ward Three being the highest values at 21%, 25%, with Ward One and Ward Four very similar, around 9% or 10%, 9% or 12%. It's an estimate of our households receiving SNAP benefits. So this is the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, which helps people who are experiencing poverty be able to afford groceries. Lynchburg comes in at 14%, with, again, very similar to Roanoke at 16%, Charlottesville's a little bit less at 9%, with Ward One coming in at 5%, and Ward Two coming in at 31% of households receiving SNAP benefits.
So one of the obvious questions here is, how can Charlottesville have the highest percentage of household poverty, but the lowest percentage of SNAP benefits? Holly's going to get to that a little bit on the next slide, but your senior population, populations with disabilities, qualify for SNAP benefits very easily, and Charlottesville's going to have a high population there. So if you would go to the next slide, Sean and Holly, if you could add any analysis to that.
So we'll take, this is the disability numbers, and so this is self-reported disabilities. So during the American Community Survey, which where some of these numbers come from, they just ask you to self-identify whether or not you have a sensory disability, a mobility disability, an employment disability, mental disability. So these numbers may be a little bit higher than folks who are receiving disability income because it is just self-identified disabilities. City of Lynchburg is at 25%, with Roanoke at 23%. And by ward, that's Ward Two with 31%, and then really the rest of the wards are pretty similar, around 22% or 24% of households with at least one or more people self-identifying with a disability.
Is this something that we have the ability to look at, how things have trended over time as well?
Yeah, some of these numbers are available historically, especially the ACS data, because they basically publish a new ACS report every year. It's like a five-year summary. So yeah, we can pull previous ACS numbers by ward.
For those who may not know what abbreviations are.
ACS.
Oh, ACS, American Community Survey, so the decennial, the Census Bureau does the decennial census every single 10 years, and that's like a true accurate count. They discovered that there's a great need to continue having this demographic data available between the censuses, but you can't do a census every single year, so they came up with the American Community Survey Program, in which they survey a certain percentage of households in localities, asking similar information. And then their demographics teams and statisticians come up with estimates. And so a lot of the data that we're using here today is based on that, and especially this slide is heavily ACS data, American Community Survey data, excuse me.
Go back to household poverty and SNAP benefits.
Yes.
Is it because we have more housing projects, low-income hood housing projects in Ward Two than any other place in the city?
Sean, I think he's asking you to go back to the SNAP benefits slide.
Sorry, Ron. Thank you.
Yeah, so we didn't map out those communities as we were doing the ward maps. That's information we can also take down and get back to you. Part of it also goes back to that initial data, that that's the oldest part of the city. And as you've seen, in all cities, suburbia kind of happens, and those who can do move out of the city, and those who can't stay. And so that may also impact those numbers as well.
Yeah.
Yep.
That was a two-part question.
Also, that's a lot of times where, in all cities, not just Lynchburg, you have more access to transportation. So that impacts it as well. Yep.
I think, and just to go back, the data, remember the stories that it's telling, remember that what was owner occupied or renter occupied in Ward Two? And then what you see is that a growth in population during the day. And I think Kent White's here, and I know that we've talked about the presidential streets that are not so presidential and our property toolkit component, those are the things when you start to think about, because we'll get in later, there's a little house, and by the way, any one of these wards buttons, if you would like one, we can get you one because Sean made them, and we're going to get an IP for it, and so no one can steal them. Make sure, Matt, we need to work on that intellectual property for him. But I think there's an interesting story for every one of our wards, but in particular as it relates to what you highlighted there, as far as Ward Two and what you see there as far as it being old, but also just generally owner occupies against renter, and also just some of the flight that's happening from it. So, good questions.
And so looking at our aging population, this is considered population 65 years and older. City of Lynchburg and Roanoke, again, are very similar, 17% for the city of Lynchburg and Roanoke at 19%. And Ward One comes in at the highest value at 22%, kind of expectedly, again, with the college age population. Ward Three has the lowest percentage of folks who are 65 years or older.
And I'll jump in real quick here, going back to Greg Patrick's point, as to why Charlottesville might have 9% of people receiving SNAP benefits compared to us, error, people with disabilities and our aging population are much higher than Charlottesville, and so therefore those folks will qualify more easily for SNAP benefits. So that might be an explanation, we don't know for sure unless we were to dig down into that. Also, I'd like to point out, kind of to Chris's point, that he's been kind of bringing up throughout the presentation, which is a good point, the summit may impact those Ward Four numbers when you're looking at folks who may identify as having a disability and the aging... as having a disability and the aging population are slightly higher. And it may be what you've mentioned as having group quarters there that are aging population.
Well, if I may, put you back very briefly.
Yep.
The number about, you know, how much money per year versus, money per year versus retired folks is interesting because you can see a correlation there. And then what I'd like to point out, there's, there is more than the summit. There's, there's a number of retirement communities that would drive this number pretty aggressively. But thank you.
So with that being the case, I would also say that Westminster Canterbury is also going to have a massive impact on Ward One.
Yes.
Because that is
Yep.
the biggest facility we have in the city.
And you see, yeah.
Yep. And you can see that right there and, you know. What would be interesting to see is all these long-term care facilities, how they lie within each specific ward probably and, and the impact that has. Because I don't think it's central to one, one ward.
And I can't tell you guys how excited I am that you're asking questions.
Yes.
Like, do you all know how terrified we were that we were going to bore you with data? So awesome, thank you.
If it's not being highlighted, just
One thing that I like is about geography is that Charlottesville's 10 square miles, we're 50 square miles and Roanoke is 52.
Mm-hmm.
Forty-two.
Forty-five.
Forty-two.
Well, I'm just, it's a little further away as far as, but I think these are, you know, where the most immediate, I say this, most immediate apertior, you know, cities, not necessarily the counties. And also just by size, just realize Charlottesville's 10 square miles. Abmar County, it's a huge county that it resides within. So just as, you know, Chris had pointed out his word and how it looks, I also like that, I'm a very visual person and knowing the sizes of each of the different cities and how and what that, what the landmass is because most, most of Lynchburg is, is built out with the exception of a few, a few areas. So those are the things that we have to contemplate.
Further comment. The reason I'm asking questions is more so that my colleagues see, especially ahead of budgetary conversations, that Ward Four is incredibly diverse when it comes to where folks are spending their money. And so if we're talking about various tax rates, various spending, that's important, especially if you're talking about a lot of folks who live in a retirement home to call it the summit, call it something else. They're not owning that, that unit most likely. They're, they're renting it. So a real estate rate may not impact them, but they might still have two vehicles as an example. So there are, there are other things that I'm trying in an indirect way to bring up, both for the public and for my colleagues, to see that there are driving reasons why I put forward recommendations because it is based off of the constituents that I do represent.
Would that be exciting for a half this discussion? I think it would be also kind of interesting to take a look at, one, when we're looking at things like the real estate tax rate, let's look at exempt properties, how many, you know, we had a discussion about that.
It's coming up.
It's coming up.
And, and you know, when we look at these large facilities, because we've had landlords in front of us when we made decisions, say, hey, thanks for keeping the real estate tax rate down because that helped me keep rent where it was at, so I didn't have to raise rent. So when we're looking at these large facilities, it would also be, I think, pertinent to, to say, how much would the real estate tax rate impact this facility? Because that's going to get passed right on to whoever's living there. Right? So that's something we need to have out in front of us and discuss.
All right, so here's the fun slide, right, that we've been promising the entire time. And so again, these are just kind of numbers and figures we came across that didn't fit into any of the other stories, but we thought were worth sharing. And so I'm happy to report that Lynchburg takes home the award for having the most households with at least one or more pet compared to all the other localities. And we look at that by ward, Ward, Ward One takes home the trophy. I think pets pretty diverse. We were joking, iguanas could count. So it is pretty open-ended, so. Another fact that we want to take a look at is just average family size. It's very similar across all the geographies, kind of hovers around that three as the average family size with Ward Two coming in the highest at 3.12. Food at home, this is more of a market value, consumer spending value. And what this basically means is a fancy way to describe how much money you could spend on groceries per year, per household. Really, it's food prepared at home, but I think that's a pretty good proxy for groceries. The city of Lynchburg comes in average at $5,000 a year spent on groceries, which is again, very similar to Roanoke with Ward One being the highest amount at just, just about $6,500 a year.
So one interesting sort of extrapolation from this data is Ward Two has the highest household size, but spends the least amount on food at home. So I'm not sure if that means the, the quality or the type of food you're buying or is there more convenience food purchased for, for use for those households? But it's a, it's an interesting dichotomy.
Well, I would also say Charlottesville, they have an overpriced Whole Foods. Charlottesville, which is probably why that number is so high up there.
Overpriced Whole Foods is an oxymoron.
I think Councilman Farady had a question.
I would also submit to the two colleagues of mine who live in Ward Two and listening to them, access is certainly driving this. I mean, I don't know, you know, how long does it take to get a grocery store in your district? And so that would certainly be a driving factor. I can think of four grocery stores from my home within five minutes, as an example. And I know that's not the case across the city. So that would be something maybe to consider in the future, how we can try to address that.
Mr. Farley has a great point in that Sean analysis that I've, but we, we looked at, Mr. Taylor, Mayor, had talked, talked to us about a grocery store in Ward Two and what that looked like and some accessibility because there's a food line that's just close to the road there.
Campbell Avenue.
Campbell Avenue. What you find if you go back, and again, the stories that the data tells, you use, you layer in disability, you layer in transportation, you layer in some other things. And while the food line is close there too, it really is excess. And so when thinking about White Rock Elementary School that I know, Ms. Reed, and I know many of you have, Mr. Taylor, Dr. Wilder, everyone has been a part of, one of the components of it is free and accessible, or accessible food. And that was one of the things I think came, I wasn't aware of, and I don't know if you are, that we, many of our, if not all of our, I'm looking at Kent, of our community centers are also food pantries for the, for the neighborhoods that they're in and how important that is. And so
Our savings as well.
Yeah, and so, so spot on as far as the highlight there. And I think we'll bring back some Sean analysis about, talk about food or opportunities in Ward Two.
We also want to take a look at people who've reported volunteer, self-reporting, self-reported volunteering in the last 12 months for a nonprofit. City of Lynchburg at 15% with Ward One being the highest, just about 18%.
I'm going to make a question. Where do you report volunteering?
Again, I think it's a question on the American Community Survey.
Census. So again, as Holly said, I couldn't help but insert myself. A couple of takeaways. You know, we always look at benchmarking city of Lynchburg, right? And who do we benchmark ourselves against? It's difficult to benchmark ourselves against counties because in terms of how they're funded and the services they provide, it's very different, right? So we're always looking for the appropriate cities. Roanoke with the demographic information that we have, they're, they're very similar, right? So when we benchmark Lynchburg, the, the best city to use to start with is Roanoke and then we've got to build that out from there. Again, the daytime population increases substantially because, you know, we are the business and economic hub of the region. But the daytime population of Ward Two especially increases. You know, you've got the, the Central Business District in downtown and you've got the Centra Hospital. And that is really driving kind of in migration of, of employment into Ward Two. Ward Three demographics especially are impacted by student population and those group quarters populations. You can really see that in those income metrics. And then this will be driven home even more when we look at some of the real estate data. But a lot of the assets in Ward Three and Ward Four are being marketed to young professionals. So what you, what you see there is, especially when we look at multifamily and apartment complexes, one of the reason, the reasons that the rents are significantly higher in those two wards is that thus the apartment stock is much newer and it was built to appeal to a young professional demographic that has a little bit more money to spend. And what you'll see as we get a little deeper into this, when we get into the housing or the real estate information, is the assessed values on those multifamily properties are really quite high. In fact, one fun fact that we discovered in, in putting all this data together is the single most valuable property in the city from an assessed value standpoint is, believe it or not, it's Rosedale, right? It's the new apartment complex. It's right on the border of Ward One and I think Ward One and Ward Three or Four. But it's that multifamily development that is assessed at over $60 million, I think, and bringing in half a million dollars a year in, in real estate tax. So I think when you look at rents, you're seeing a lot of those new apartment complexes appealing to young folks, but also at very high assessed values that are helping the real estate tax base pretty, pretty dramatically.
So going back to that, can we go back a bunch of slides to the daytime population slide? Like where the, I know I'm asking to go way back, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Feel like you should make a rewind noise.
Okay. Daytime population. So, and you can leave it on this one, this is fine. What is the source for this information? What is the source that drives telling us what the daytime population is? Where is it coming from?
Where's the data coming from?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we use a vendor called ESRI or Esri.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they're a big geographic information systems vendor, but they're also one of the top-rated demographic and market data providers in the United States. And so as part of our licensing for our GIS software, we have access to a program that they call Community Analyst. And so they republish estimates every single year, typically around the July timeframe. So these are, most of what we're seeing here are the 2024 estimates. And they base that, a big foundation to that demographic data is the American Community Survey data. So they take that information and their internal demographers and statisticians then produce estimates based on that information.
So, and because the question that I have about this in particular, when you look at the total number going from 80,000 to 102, right? So we've got essentially people coming in from the counties. We've also got people from the city going out to the counties to work during the day. And then we have people from the wards relocating to a different ward to work and so forth. So, so what I would particularly like to see is some way, not only to show the, not just the whole number, but example, Ward Two. If we're going from 19,000 is the, is the nighttime population to 42.3 thousand is the daytime population, well, where are those additional 22,000-ish people coming from? Right? So out of those 22,000 people that are going into Ward Two during the day, because we have a 22,000 increase in the city overall during the day, right? How many of those people are coming from within the city into the Central Business District, so to speak? How many of those people are coming from the counties into there and so forth? Because if, if we're, you know, looking at this as a potential tool for decision-making, we don't want to be clouded by, you know, just focusing on downtown because it looks like the most people spend their time downtown during the day. Because they all, we also may need to consider that some of these people, I'm sure a big portion of them are coming from Ward One into downtown, right? I'm sure they're coming from other areas of the city. Also people from, coming from the counties and so forth. It'd be very interesting to see how do we get to those daytime numbers and where do those, but what's the source of those people, you know, where did they come from to get there? Does that make sense?
Yep, we got it. And just a reminder, and I know you know this, but I just want to clarify, Ward Two, it's not just downtown. I know a lot of people are coming downtown. Police departments currently there. Courts are there, businesses there, but it's also Centra out on Langhorne kind of midtown area as well. And Centra is our largest employer, one of our largest employers, top two for sure. And so that is probably impacting that number as well, a lot.
Yeah, so, so yeah, it'd be interesting to see, you know, where are they coming from? Where are they going to, you know?
Got it.
It doesn't answer the question directly, but just a little bit more information, like specifically about Ward Two, of that total daytime population of about 42, 43,000, 31,000, 31 and a half thousand of them are considered to be workers at that point. And then the daytime residential population is about 10 and a half thousand.
Yes, so there's 7,000 people leaving Ward One and going elsewhere during the day. So that's something interesting too. It'd be nice to know, for example, how many people are leaving our MSA on a daily basis and working in another MSA. Because I'm sure that's probably happening, right? We've got people, I know people that, that, you know, are asleep in the city, but they ride the train every Monday to Washington DC and then come back every Friday.
And MSA metropolitan
Yeah, so what, so what, so what kind of, you know, how much of that is going on as well? So I mean, there's, there's a lot more to the story than just these numbers, I guess, when you want to start talking about making decisions and, and I don't want to, you can use this information for great things. You can also use it to propagandize an objective and that's what I will make sure we don't do.
So one of the things that we're very careful about, for years, there's this term data-driven, right? And we're very, we're very careful, one of the first things Holly and I talked about was we want to be data-informed, right? Because being data-informed means that you're using data to make decisions, but you're also using lots of other information, right? So it's, it's important that we understand that this is useful, but it is not the end-all, be-all. And we'll definitely see how granular we can get on some of those data points that you've discussed.
I'd also love to see if you guys can figure out where, I don't know if you're going to find it in ACS, but where is the declining enrollment in our city schools going? Because the consultant presentation that we were provided two years ago is already off by 5%. Like we're 5% less in enrollment than we were projected to be in two years ago.
Got it.
Excellent. Thank you. So we wanted to provide a little bit more data outside of just demographics. So we pulled some data from some city systems and just to kind of continue the story of telling the story of Lynchburg. So we're going to take a look at property data from the assessor's office. We're going to look at residential permits. And then we're also just going to take a quick look at some of the city assets across the city of Lynchburg broken out by Ward as well.
Sure. I'm going to take a quick, I'm going to go to the mayor and just
How's everybody feeling? We're, we're an hour in, we got probably about an hour more of
Fun data.
I don't know if anybody needs blood, stand up and sit down or do something. Are we tracking okay? Everybody feel pretty good? Looking around, looking for nods? Everybody good, 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 good? We're good? Good, 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 good? All right, crack on.
Thank you. So first thing we'll jump into is the parcel or assessment information. And there's a lot of data on this screen, so I just wanted to give kind of a high-level overview of what you're seeing on the screen. You won't want to change your mind. Before we jump into the numbers, just kind of give you an idea of what's on the screen before we get into some of the details. So we're going to be looking at data through the lens of property categories and these are assessment-driven property categories. So this is how, the categories that the assessor uses to appraise property. We'll be looking at through parcel count, number of parcels and percentage of total parcel count, area, so you can think of this as acreage, assessed acreage, and then also total assessed value. And then a couple other numbers that we calculated that we thought are really good for comparing, comparing data across wards is your average assessed value and then also your value, your assessed value per acre.
Is it just all separate at parcel view? Is that what this is?
It's out of the, the assessor's data that publishes to parcel viewer. But yes, it's the same data. And so if we look at the city as a whole, the city of Lynchburg has just over 32,000 parcels, about 28,000 acres of assessed land. And that comes in at just about $10.3 billion worth of assessed value. Highlighting just some highlights across the wards, that highlight might be a little difficult to see, but Ward Two has the most number of parcels with, and makes up the highest percentage of parcels in the city, just over, just shy of 11,000. Ward One has the most assessed area in the city of Lynchburg, making up about 36% of the assessed area. Ward one has the most assessed area in the city of Lynchburg, making up about thirty six percent of the assessed area. And Ward three comes in at the highest assessed value across all the wards, about three billion dollars worth of assessed value. Which accounts for about twenty eight point five percent of the total assessed value for the city of Lynchburg. Now we'll kind of jump into the data, looking at it by property class or property category. The first thing we'll talk about is exempt properties. So exempt properties account for about five point five percent of the total number of parcels in the city. It's about twenty two point four percent of the assessed land in the city. And it accounts exempt properties account for twenty four point four percent of the assessed value in the city of Lynchburg. And highlighting just a couple of features of the wards, Ward two and Ward three have the highest percentage of tax exempted properties in the city of Lynchburg. Real estate tax exempt properties in the city of Lynchburg. Digging into Ward two, that's a combination of local government. Again, if you remember from the Ward two map, it's the oldest part of the city. A lot of the city's facilities are located downtown, but that's also when you look at the valuation, Centra includes Centra properties as well. Looking at Ward three, the highest category there was tax exempt non-government education, which essentially means Liberty University would be the highest driver of that number for for Ward three.
So not to get ahead of some of the takeaways, but you know, when we talk about tax exempt land, you know. Oftentimes, the immediate takeaway is, you know, boy, you know, there's the tax base and we're not generating real estate tax there. But it's important to remember, the biggest employers in the city are all tax exempt, right? So you've got Liberty University, you've got the school system, you've got the city, you've got Centra. So they're bringing many, many other economic benefits to the city, even though the property is is tax exempt.
So. Never mind.
Interesting takeaway that I'd like to point to my colleagues. So if you look at assessed value. By single family and multifamily per ward. Ward one, one point eight million for single family, multifamily is one ninety. Ward two is one point four, I'm sorry, six forty nine and then two forty two oh seven respectively. This is what I thought was interesting, and I wanted to know if you guys had gleaned any anything off of this. Ward three, for single family, eight hundred and forty seven. Multifamily, two hundred and fifteen. I would have expected that to be more, and there's similarities between Ward three and four in this regard. Single family, one point four, and then multifamily, two thirty seven.
Sean's giving a walkie through single family, multifamily. That was a very good lead in. He's going to point out that in just a second.
Yep, so taking a look at single family residential, it accounts for eighty five percent of the parcels in the city of Lynchburg. Which is about fifty four percent of the land and forty five percent of the total assessed value.
Question.
Yes.
That forty five and a half percent of total assessed value, is that of the taxable or of the total?
Total.
So that's of the total.
Yes.
So it's actually more than fifty percent.
Of the taxable.
Of the taxable. So when we're looking at real estate taxes, the number one thing that we're impacting is single family residential, period. That's single family residential property owners pay the burden of our real estate tax revenue from the city. And I think that's the point that's very clear when you look at this.
And just highlighting some things across the wards, Ward two has the highest number of single family residential properties in terms of number. But in terms of concentration, Ward one has the highest concentration. Ninety one percent of the parcels in Ward one are single family residential. With the assessed value being the highest in Ward one as well, about one point eight billion dollars. And then just a similar trend across all the wards, that single family makes up the highest percentage of parcels in each one of the wards. And then we just highlighted some of the average assessed values on the right hand column with Ward one being about two hundred and sixty thousand dollars and onwards from there. Looking at multifamily residential, it's kind of the reverse. Multifamily residential makes up one percent of parcels in the city. Three point four percent of the area, it accounts for eighteen eight point two percent to eight point two percent of the total assessed value. And that trend is consistent across most of the wards hovering around one, one point two percent across all the wards in terms of percent of parcels. And highlighting some of the average value, assessed values there, say Ward one is about two million, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And one trend that stood out in the data is that across all wards and all geographies, the assessed value per acre is highest for multifamily residential across all categories.
Could you eventually, whenever you can, send me the information or for all of council, it doesn't matter to me. Remembering your data for Ward four, it was fifty four percent are single family homeowner and forty six or forty seven was renting. Can you integrate that into this data and pull? Here's what I'm trying to drive. I want to know how many people in Ward four who are multifamily residential. Are in that bracket, if you will. To say it differently, I want to know, okay, if fifty four percent of homeowners in Lynch in Ward four are single family. Real estate taxpayers and forty seven are renting. I want to see where those how those numbers draw out and how many households and people we can impact by pulling different levers. I couldn't really find a way to articulate the question, but I think you know what I'm driving at. Thank you.
Population versus.
And I think something also to to point out, too, is when we're making these decisions, it would be really nice to see where the impact of a. You know, the assessment is going to hit the hardest, right? Because several years ago, the the increased assessments were disproportionately hitting single family residential. That's where the the highest percentage of that increase was going to land. And, you know, it wasn't with commercial properties. So so that's that's something, you know, if we're going to look at this, you know, when we when we when we consider equalizing, you know, that equalizing. Typically includes a real estate tax increase for single family residential property owners, right? So that's something I think we need to take a look at because at the end of the day, while we may have a net. Neutral with an equalization. There's still going to be people that are going to be impacted with tax increases, and there's going to be people that get tax reductions. And going into this with that information, looking at it fully and completely, I think is very important. Because we need to know who's paying for the money, you know, when we appropriate these funds to to do these programs and services, where's that money coming from, right? And. That's the people we work for.
To just add on what Mr. Missin's saying, anecdotally, of course, it's not data driven, but it's door to door driven. In Ward three, what I experienced was that folks had heard of equalization, kind of understood the idea of it. But they pointed out to me that I still paid more of my money than I did the previous year. So that's what I'm concerned about because the word equalization sounds good and it sounds positive. But it doesn't always impact the people in my ward as equal. Because they don't see it as equal if they still write a larger check. So that's anecdotal, but I appreciate the data.
Is it because the property value is going up? Is it because the property value is going up overall?
What's the question? I'm sorry.
Is it because the property value, the tax rate is going up? Is it because the property value itself is going up?
Oh, gotcha. Greg, do you want to address that?
Yeah, I mean, I think as we as we think through the the budget, and we'll get into this a little bit in the next set of presentations. We don't have data yet for where assessed values are going to be. We do expect, based on market conditions, we're going to see an increase in in assessed values overall. But I think the point is if single family residential assessed values increase at a faster rate than the overall tax base. Then then what you see is in an equalization, those folks still pay more in hard tax dollars than they did previously.
Just want to make sure I'm reading this correctly. So. Where it says says the percentage of parcels for multifamily residential in each ward. It's showing that actually wards one and two have the most multifamily residential units. Correct, one point one and one point two percent?
Parcels.
Parcels.
But what what we don't, what this doesn't tell us is how many units are on each of those parcels. So if you have large apartment complexes, that may change kind of that dynamic.
Okay.
And that's what we can't, that's what we can't parse out from this.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
So just moving on to commercial property, kind of a similar walkthrough of the data here. Accounts for seven point one percent of the parcels in the city of Lynchburg, about eleven point six percent of the assessed area. And accounts for seventeen point two of seventeen point two percent of the total assessed value. And kind of just, yes.
Can we back up one step on the question that Ms. Regis asked? If you look at Ward four actually, right? You've got a huge disparity between the number of parcels and then the area. So Ward four has the lowest number of multifamily parcels, but they also have the highest area. And I think that speaks to just exactly what Greg was talking about. So you can't look at that number of total number of parcels, because if you have larger complexes that are being built on a single parcel. And I think of things recently, you know, Rosedale would be one parcel, right? What's the one there on Old Graves Mill?
Eleven.
Eleven.
Twenty five.
Eleven twenty five, then you've got. The ones right behind the Kroger, you've got all the stuff in Windhurst. Those are all, you know, there's a lot of single parcels that are massive complexes.
Yeah, I think you see that too also in the average assessed value that's highlighted, even though Ward four has the smallest number, has the largest assessed value.
It's probably my, I I would anecdotally have no doubt, looking at that and saying Ward four has the most units.
Right, so looking at that.
Units that people can live in. Ward four, not even close, you know, Stone Mill. Yeah, Stone Mill is Ward one, I think, right? Yeah, I think that's Ward one, but still, you know, going on, there's just.
Sure, but considering Ward three services, so many of the LU students, you have the. Lowest number of parcels with also a small area, which is interesting because we've had so much resistance to adding anything out in Ward three. So that's just an interesting observation.
But it's also got the largest number of parcels that are institutionally zoned that we can't touch because of the massive area that Liberty University complex touches.
I know, but we've said no to a lot of builders in that ward. And it just, that's an interesting thing to note, so.
And it goes back, and I think we're all highlighting something that, remember, one of the things you got to look at, top five employers, at least three or four of whom are tax exempt. Right? And it's the other income that you get. And we ran into this in Norfolk. We had the port of Virginia. We had the largest naval seaport in the world, and so we were at. Almost forty percent, forty percent of our, like, because you throw in government, federal and and local and what have you. And so it becomes, because what happens with that, because it is super important, all those young people that we have here in town that. Heads in beds, mamas and daddies that come, many of you have those stories of following your children here to school, and that's fantastic. Then what we have is what we had in Norfolk is we had this road called Terminal Boulevard that trucks came in and out of that port every day. And I didn't have the wherewithal or the or the resources to repave. Because those are, you know, X number ton trucks running up and down Hampton Boulevard and Terminal Boulevard every day. In the state, I did my best hat in hand and they and they didn't, they were super kind. I even got a button, I think I did, and maybe a sandwich. But but I didn't get no, no resources for so that, so as we begin to, as we begin to. Bring sinew and muscle to many of these numbers into these areas, some of the things you got to think about are the costs associated with providing the services necessary to meet. Those needs for those institutions that are, we are so happy they're in town. And I I just reflect on forty percent of my previous city and what what that was. And so, Sean?
And I think picking back up with commercial, so seven point one percent of total parcels, eleven point six percent of assessed area. Seventeen point two percent of total assessed value. Just looking at Ward by Ward, Ward two has the highest number and concentration of commercial properties. Whereas Ward three has the highest total assessed value for commercial properties and twenty one point six percent. And then looking at industrial, small percentage of parcels, one point four percent, eight point six percent of assessed area. And four point eight percent of the total assessed value. Highest number of industrial parcels is in Ward two, highest concentration is in Ward three. Highest assessed value is in Ward three. And then the highest concentration or percentage of total assessed value is in Ward four. So pretty diverse across all the wards there. Moving on from property. We wanted to give an idea of potentially where residential investment is occurring in the city of Lynchburg. And one of the numbers that we could use to show that and demonstrate that is residential building permits. So these are the permits that you pull to do anywhere from an electrical upgrade all the way up to a new construction. And so in the city of Lynchburg as a whole, there were about just over one thousand of those permits pulled last in twenty twenty four. With Ward one having the highest number at three hundred and seventeen. Every time someone submits a permit or applies for a permit, they estimate the job value on that permit to complete that work. And so that's what these numbers reflect. So for the city of Lynchburg for twenty twenty four, that's just about ninety seven million dollars. Self-reported by the person submitting the report, so it is an estimate. With Ward two having the highest value there at thirty five point two three million dollars. That number was pretty high, so we looked into that, and there are some apartments going in off of Langhorn Road, just adjacent to the old Holy Cross property. Not the Holy Cross property itself, but across from that. And those had four relatively large fifty four unit apartment buildings, each, I think, submitted with a permit of about six million, seven hundred and fifty thousand each. So just about twenty eight million of that thirty five million is that apartment complex.
Question. So that's private funds that we're talking about? This isn't really, I mean, we don't probably have that breakdown on whether it's. Government funds going into these construction projects, values, or private funds. Do we know that?
Point of caution.
Private, really private for residential permits.
So it's probably.
So this, does this only, so we're only looking at residential permits for this?
Correct.
Correct. There can be some nonprofit housing that's mixed into this, but I'm totally on whole profit.
Is there any way to break this down? And look at, you know, new construction v, you know. Building a new deck or, because you got to, you got to, you got to pull permit to put a swimming pool in as well, right? So.
Yeah.
So, you know, there could be a huge. I guess, the story would be could be totally different depending on the purpose that the pull the permit is pulled for.
Yeah, and if I'm remembering correctly, that in terms of number of permits, it's for trade work. So the highest number of permits is for trades, and if you look at construction value, the highest category there is new construction in terms of value.
Do we, do we have any idea how many were pulled by a general contractor and not just for a trade?
We should go with.
Because that's going to tell a totally different story.
And a breakdown by the type of permits and the value of those permits as well.
And kind of tying into residential permits, we wanted to show housing cases, so you can consider these building code violations that are reported to the city of Lynchburg. And the reason we wanted to show that is often building code violations result in a permit or could result in a permit needed to be pulled. So we thought that kind of told a more broader story of residential permits. There's about one hundred and eighty four of those in twenty twenty four, with a hundred of those being in Ward two. And again, we think that speaks to the older housing stock that exists in Ward two. There's just a lot of older houses.
How much of that's coming from rental inspection? Is that included in this?
I'll have to look into that.
That's separate.
We believe it's just housing cases, yep.
So what's interesting is you overlay this number, so I I look at this as kind of a derelict housing proxy, right? So you overlay this with the in migration of of employment on a daily basis, right? So what you see is the ward with the most, you know, bi-proxy derelict housing.
is also seeing the largest influx of employees during the day, you know? Is that what they're seeing of the city, right? So, you know, this is a plug for some of that housing toolkit work. The, you know, the potential demolition work through the housing toolkit, potential strategic acquisition to make sure that, you know, the folks that are coming into the city are not only seeing the city as an ideal place to work, but seeing the city as an ideal place to, to live.
So, so with, with exactly what you just said, I think that there's something to think about is, wards are, again, pretty big, it's not a neighborhood, right? And if you were to break this down by precinct perhaps, right? It might tell you a totally different story, because that large in-migration of workers are probably going to a totally different precinct on a daily basis and aren't even seeing where this large number of derelict houses are potentially. Does that make sense? So, so I think that, that, I understand what you're saying, but, but if people are, you know, one-way, expressway, get off of Main Street, boom, go to work, they aren't seeing Florida Avenue. They aren't seeing Campbell Avenue. They're not seeing Miller Park. So that's just one other way to consider, you know, does that make sense?
Yeah, no, absolutely, I will tell you, I drive to, shamelessly, McDonald's every once in a while up in Memorial Boulevard, even though I'm working downtown, so you do see some of that as you're looking to get lunch.
I get it, I get it.
Gotta get my two cheeseburgers and Diet Coke.
But it's just something I would consider with that. And I got one question, I'm gonna hold it till the end though, so.
So another set of data that we want to show you is the city assets across the city and in wards, and we just chose a couple of them. Looking at city maintained trees, so these are trees that are maintained by the urban forester, or urban forester, often lining the right of way and in the medians, there's 12,260 trees maintained in the city, with about 5,000, 5,500 of those being in Ward two.
Where are all those trees in Ward two?
I think, I think why they're in Ward two is all, could be just because that's the older part of town with the street line, kind of gridded, you know, number of presidential streets, is how often they were lined there, but.
And we can break this down at a more granular level, this is our first, this is our first go at a presentation like this, so if you guys want more information, we, we can happily.
We can make Sean after this, just go count them.
Let's work on the S and C, let's work on the S and C.
Our wonderful, wonderful urban forester has done that, he's done an incredible job.
He can tell you even every kind of tree in every ward.
Incredible, yep. But it does kind of follow the downtown Ford Avenue corridors where you see the concentration, it's almost like a streak across the center of the city.
It's interesting, it'd be cool to see on a map, like a heat map.
Yeah, yeah. And then, want to take a look at street signs, very similar story to trees, so it kind of speaks to that gridded road type relationship, supports that theory. There are just shy of 16,000 street signs maintained and installed by the city of Lynchburg, with a high concentration of those being in Ward two.
Is, you know, I'm sure historic districts probably contribute to that as well, right?
I'm sorry.
Historic districts, like signage with historic districts and things like that.
I believe that's included in the count, yeah, and then with downtown too, you know, parking, park signage as well, so no parking, parking hours increases quite a bit. Then looking at bridges and culverts, there's 251 bridges that are included in the city's bridge management program. So these are bridges that folks in the public works department go out and inspect on a regular basis. And they're large culverts or bridges, Ward three having the highest concentration at 80.
So we got no trees, but we got a lot of concrete culverts, is that what you're doing?
You have a lot of streams.
Streams.
To have bridges and culverts, you have to have streams, you have waterworks.
Then we also want to take a look at park property, so the 932 acres is total park property, and that includes things like the land around our neighborhood centers and the parks, the playgrounds, you know, basketball courts around the neighborhood centers. If you're looking at more from a traditional lens of just large park properties, it's 850 acres, but we decided to show the, the whole number, with a high concentration in Ward two, 512 acres. A lot of that is that Blackwater Creek natural area and trail that runs along the north in Miller Park. And then Ward one also pretty high with Peaks View Park that's available there.
And I expect this information, especially Councilman Feraldi resonates with you, as you can see, you know, Ward three and Ward four are, massively lagging behind the other two wards.
No, just, just my talk to you.
All right, so some key takeaways, I, I think what, what we'd add is, all the different types of property classes have their, have their different strategic and competitive advantages, right? So 25% of the real estate is, that is assessed, is exempt from taxes, right? Some, 25% of the assessed value, but these are our largest employers, we've kind of talked through this already. The most efficient land use to grow the real estate tax base is multifamily residential. So if you look at just the assessed value per acre, multifamily residential is, is assessed at three times the amount of, of single family. Commercial and industrial properties create employment opportunities and other tax streams. So while if you just look at assessed value, you may not catch the whole picture there. And then access to parks in Ward three and Ward four are very limited. But again, while, while, you know, our CIP dollars, we're in a maintenance CIP, we're gonna take care of our bridges and our culverts, you know, parks are those things that are additional amenities, right? So it's a, it's a different, it's a different type of focus in our, in our CIP and requires resources for it to develop more parkland. So, that's the takeaways on, on this section of the presentation.
So, getting ready, now that Sean's done all the hard stuff, I'm gonna have fun and talk about all the fun things that we do in the city. And this is kind of a look through the lens of a citizen, and again, remember, we're having fun in this section, making sure you're still awake, as if a citizen is going through their day and accessing city services. So we're just gonna jump right in. Oftentimes, these four ladies, if you have not met them, they man our citizens' first desk in the main floor of City Hall. They're oftentimes the first person to see, talk to, email, correspond with their citizens. This is Shauna, Lenora, Sherilyn, and Beth, and they interact on average with 142 people a day. So that means each one of them are talking to about 36 residents on any given day. That's through emails, phone calls, and people showing up to City Hall. So let's imagine that you woke up this morning and you were super excited to come to work. And you thought, I just really want to hear that data presentation, so I need to take my shower, go to the restroom, brush my teeth. At that point in time, you have already accessed three city services. The first being our clean drinking water that we have in the city. Our water resources facility treats 10.7 million gallons of fresh drinking water a day.
Better than rich.
Yeah, we're doing all right, we're doing all right. And that's the equivalent of about 500 swimming pools. And we have four operators that are frontline folks that are taking care of maintaining that drinking water, and that's four operators on two 12-hour shifts. So we have eight people, basically, that are taking care of those 500 swimming pools every single day for us, it's pretty awesome. And then, you know, you flush the toilet, there you go, flush the toilet, and also 12.3 million gallons of sewer that we're treating on any given day. I'm sure Tim Mitchell's gonna fuss at me later for not using all the fancy words that Tim would use if he were here, but I'm going with sewage, at our wastewater recovery facility. And we have three to five operators on three eight-hour shifts that are taking care of that facility. That sewer has to travel to the facility, so we have many sewer lines that need to be maintained. We are cleaning about 1,320 linear feet of sewage lines a day. That is the, if you added 100 more feet to the Empire State Building, that is how large of an area that is. And in order to do that, this is Mr. Michael Popekey, that is driving one of our Vaccon trucks. Those Vaccon trucks are used to clean our sewage lines. One of those trucks costs around $600,000, and we have five of them. Three of them are currently in use or two are reserved. We make sure we have reserves so that if something happens to one, we don't just have dirty sewage lines, we can keep running on with business.
And I will tell you, if you ever go down to the Fleet Operations Center, there, there's about 100% chance there'll be a Vacter or Vaccon truck down there.
Yes, and our folks at Fleet climb into those trucks and put on special suits and do what they gotta do, it's pretty impressive. Those trucks have a life expectancy of around seven years. We are currently replacing them at about the, the nine-year mark, and we are ordering, most recently, now you guys know the auto industry went kind of crazy, so we are ordering about one of these every one to two years. And we have six operators that are cleaning that 1,300-plus linear feet of sewage every day. It is three crews of two people that man these trucks.
How long does it take to get a new truck?
So I have collected some of that data from Chuck Kramer, Fleet Director, and it just depends on the type of vehicle that it is. And it depends on the industry and it depends on the manufacturer. So if you want to ask Chuck those questions, which I have done, prepare to be frustrated, because he is also frustrated as to the answer, yes, I'm like, what do you mean? So he's like, well, for this model of this type of truck, it's this long because of this manufacturer, and this model of this truck is this long because of this manufacturer, so.
Here's what I can tell you, is that it is longer in every instance.
Yes, much longer than it used to be.
We bought a fire truck, or whatever the apparatus, four years ago, before I even got here?
We just bought a new tiller about a year ago, 2.4-plus million dollars, it'll be here in 48 months.
Yeah. Yeah, and we'll, we'll talk more about the fire vehicles specifically here in a few minutes, but I can tell you, one of the examples that Chuck gave me was a medic unit, you know, an ambulance. Used to be six to nine months to get one, and now it's three and a half years, so it's, it's been extended quite a bit. They do, one re-chassis within that time period, yep.
One re-chassis, it's taken three years to do a re-chassis?
No, 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 that's to order a brand-new vehicle, but in between getting, yeah, between getting a new vehicle, they'll do a re-chassis, yes. And it doesn't take that long, no.
Okay.
Yep.
And with that is, is basically they take the box off the back of the truck and put it in one?
Yep. I learned all kinds of Fleet things I never knew, super fun. So you've got, you've, you've got yourself ready for work, you go outside, you realize it's trash day, you need to come outside and take your trash can out to the curb, you start thinking about, our folks that make sure that we're not having collections of trash piling up on our streets. Our public works folks collect 6,250 trash cans, residential trash cans, a day, pretty impressive. They do that with seven trucks and seven drivers, super impressive, yep. Go ahead.
Pet peeve PSA, you see that trash can on the side of the road right there?
Yes.
We need to teach our citizens to turn it around and put the handle facing the road, because that's faster and more efficient for our trash delivery truck drivers.
Who are picking up 6,000 cans a day.
I have two trash cans, I put the handle out into the cul-de-sac every Tuesday, and sometimes I turn my neighbors around, because that makes it faster and smoother and easier for them to get their work done.
Yes.
So that's just a pet peeve PSA.
Correction, depends on the truck that you're driving, because I have to ride on one of our trucks with our, our drivers. And the bar in the front of the can attaches to a lifter that goes up on the side of the truck and helps dump the can in. So if it's facing that direction, they roll it into the little lifter, and if you have it turned backwards, they have to turn it around. So, depends on the truck.
And I love that you guys are looking out for our workers, because these folks have a hard job, and those seven drivers are working really hard to make sure they're getting those 6,000 cans a day. They do, we do have 12 hoppers that work along aside those, and you can imagine hopper, this person hopping off the truck to grab the trash can. And we have those come through temp agencies to work with us, or they're not full-time Lynchburg City employees. We use temp agencies to help with that.
Before you were here, before you were here, they asked during COVID for people to put the trash cans out that way, when the handle faces in.
So speaking of those trucks, each one of those trucks costs about $400,000, and they have a life expectancy of around seven years, we are currently replacing them around 10. And we have been ordering at least two of those in the past couple of years, every year, so.
They're hard to get, aren't they?
Yes. So you got your trash out to the curb, and then you looked across the street and you saw that your neighbor had not mowed their grass in a while, and they also started doing some new construction. So you started to wonder about new construction and buildings in the city. New construction and building permits take a while, and there's a process that you go through depending on the type of permit that you're getting. But here in the city, we are finalizing about seven of those a day. We have inspectors that go out and inspect new construction and buildings, they are doing about 59 of those inspections a day, and we have four inspectors that are doing that work. In addition to that, our community development department is doing inspections for the things like the tall grass, abandoned vehicles, clutter, those are called neighborhood, neighborhood services, yes, fires. And in addition to that, Marty had asked earlier about residential inspections, this is where residential, or rental inspections are included in this number here, and we have five people who are doing those, average 32 a day. So as you look around at the tall grass and the new buildings, you may be wondering how that might impact the value of your own property? Yes, sir?
So we're clearing seven applications a day?
Yes.
How many applications are we getting a day?
Are we getting a day? So I would have to go back and get that number.
Because I'd be curious to see, are we getting more applications in a day than we're clearing? Does that make sense?
Yes.
Or are we getting the same number of applications in a day that were cleared?
Yeah, we are probably.
I had a building permit that took forever.
Ken looks like he wants to say something.
It's the complexity of it and the variance, right? It's the, it's the labor work that we're doing, so we have building permits that we turn around same day, and the, the maximum review time is, is 10 days on those, so before we're running back. But a lot of that is interaction with the homeowner, with the, with the contractor, or with the design professional.
Yep, thank you, Ken.
Yes, yes ma'am.
So as you're thinking about how that's impacting the value of your property, our assessor's office is doing around 65 on average a day property evaluations and assessments to determine property values, and we have five assessors in our assessor's office that's doing that work. So you finally get in your car, and you're finally on your way to work, and you experience some type of public safety emergency, be it a fire, a car accident, in which our public safety folks need to assist. We are currently getting about, so Chief Zudema, love him, but he emailed me last night, if you guys don't know, he works all the time. I don't know when he sleeps, but emailed me last night and said, I have the most updated numbers for you, is it too late? Like, a little bit, but I'll say it out loud. So averaging, when I collected this data, it was 11 months' worth of data, and that averaged out to about 164 calls a day. The chief finally had the full 12 months of the last calendar year, and that really is more like 180 calls a day that the police department is receiving. And we get about 48 non-fire calls a day, so that would be medical emergencies, traffic accidents, all of those types of things, and then five fire calls a week, so those are actual structure fires that we're getting caught.
A week or a day?
Uh, per week, five fire calls a week, and 48 non-fire calls a day.
Now.
Yep.
Go back, so, so you get 164, that's police calls?
Yes, that the police are responding to.
So that they're responding to?
Mm-hmm.
But that's not calls coming in?
That's 164 calls that the police are responding to.
But there's a difference between calls that come in and calls that get responded to. So how many, I guess the question I'm asking is how many calls are dispatchers fielding, does that make sense?
Yes, I don't have that number.
Because that is, I believe, way higher.
Yeah, because it could be something like, you know, anybody listen Q9 on this morning, they were talking about the calls that come to 911 that you might not necessarily send someone out to. And it, you're right, much higher call volume, but it might not be something appropriate for the fire department.
How many people are asking public safety, and then from that point, you know, 164 responses? It's not necessarily, you know, there's a call coming in, then there's a response, right? And then when you're looking at five, so you're saying those five fire calls a week are, are actual structure fires, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
But that doesn't include smoke investigations, that doesn't include?
Fire alarms.
Fire alarms, that doesn't include a whole range of different things. So, so there's just a lot, there's a lot missing here, and I don't want to understate what our police officers and our firefighters and our EMS providers and our dispatchers are doing.
Oh, most definitely, yep.
I do want to acknowledge, as pointed out by the mayor, we do not drive Mercedes.
Yes, Greg gave me a hard time about that.
We just want to make sure that, it's more like what you see in the picture over here.
They are not Mercedes. We just want to make sure that it's more like what you see in the picture over here. It's more of a Ford, you know, it's not from France.
That looks to me more like a European police car with the Dukes of Hazzard light bar, that's what that looks like.
So you will see actual pictures now of our fleet. These are our medic units. They cost around $475,000 apiece. We have 12 of them, six of them are in use, six of them are in reserve. And they are estimated to have a life expectancy of around eight years. They're currently being replaced, as I said earlier, around 10 years. And I think we have been ordering, I gotta use my notes. I try to remember all the numbers, but we are ordering around one a year for the past couple of years. These are our fire engines. They cost about 1.1 million. We have 13 of them, eight are in use and five are in reserve. They have a life expectancy of around 15 years. They're currently being replaced around the 20-year mark. And we've been ordering on average around one of these a year for the past couple of years. And these are our ladder trucks, and they cost around $2.4 million. There's a 4+ there because we have two that are in use, we have two that are in reserve, and we have the one tiller that Greg just talked about that we have ordered that is not yet here because it takes about 48 months to get them.
It's about to take months to fix them.
Yeah, yeah, yep. And their life expectancy is around 15 years as well, also being replaced around the 20-year mark.
And if you go to the Fleet building, you will see right next to the VAC or VACON truck, at least one fire apparatus.
Always, always.
I'm glad you mentioned Fleet because this is a good, because I don't, yeah, go ahead.
Is there a particular formula for the number of vehicles that we have in reserve for a particular department? Or how is that projected and what's the value?
So it just depends on the type of fleet equipment that it is and what they need it for. So for example, the medic units, when I say they're six in use and six in reserve, those six in reserve may be outdoing things. So for example, if one of the high schools has a football game, you always have a medic unit there on standby for a football game. So it just depends on the vehicles and what they're being used for.
Reserve isn't out of service, it's just not responding to active calls at that particular.
It's just not being used daily.
Okay.
They're usually, so I'll give you an example. A ladder truck is usually, ladder truck or fire engine is usually moved over once it hits a certain year mark. So if their life expectancy is 15 years, it may be moved to reserve at 12 years to lower the maintenance on those vehicles and keep the newer trucks in service. And then have the reserve be kind of the older units that are still good and still usable. But because they have the higher mileage and higher use, they're not being used as actively as the other vehicles.
Okay, that's helpful.
Yes.
And they get used pretty regularly.
Yeah.
You know, if you take your fire engine and go get the oil changed in it, you put your stuff on a reserve piece, and you take that one out until you go back and pick it up later in the day and so forth and things like that. I would be very interested specifically with our medic units in understanding the utilization. Right? So in a 24-hour shift, what is it, you know, not necessarily in a 24-hour shift, but in all available hours, we need to be tracking how these units are being utilized. And utilization includes not just from the time that the alarm hits to the time they return back to the station. It could also be out-of-service time for training and so forth. Because when these folks are working 24-hour shifts, we need to make sure we're doing everything we can to not overutilize them and not, you know. They're across the river, I know Winter's aware of this. They just switched to a 72-hour, 24/72.
Yep.
We can't afford that. Quite frankly, we cannot purchase another shift for the fire department. It's too many people, right? But we need to keep a close eye on that utilization so we're not burning these people out as long as we're using that 24/48 schedule.
Sounds like a good idea for a dashboard.
You know, I love dashboard, Kirk.
Me too.
That sounds like a great idea. I know the fire department has been working on some of that data as well. And we're partnering with them to kind of look at that data and those dashboards. This was a spot I was just going to talk about our Fleet Department very briefly because I've been mentioning Fleet throughout and I don't have any other Fleet examples through here. But overall, Fleet has 895 assets, is what they call them, that they maintain for the city, which is quite a bit. If we were to value all 895 of those assets, it would be around $58 million. And if for some crazy reason we had to replace all 895 at one time, it would be around $91 million. So that's a huge asset for the city. We have a super tiny Fleet Department and hands off to those technicians in our Fleet Department for maintaining all of those vehicles to the quality that they do. It's super impressive. So on with our public safety folks. To equip and train a new police officer, it costs around $17,334. That's just to equip and train, that does not include salary. And we have 179 sworn police officers. To equip and train a new firefighter, it's around $35,876. And we have 188 sworn firefighters. All right, so you finally are able to move along. You pass a grandmother walking her granddaughter to school. And you start to think about our most vulnerable populations in the city that Sean mentioned earlier. In the city of Lynchburg, in a given month, we receive about 72 referrals or phone calls for child protective services, which would be abuse and neglect complaints for children. And we receive around 58 calls a month for adult protective services. So that would be our abuse and neglect for our aging population. Every month, we are maintaining about 480 children either in adoption, awaiting adoption, or in foster care. And in any given month, there are 35,000 people in the city of Lynchburg that our Human Services Department is assisting with benefits. So that would be Medicaid, TANF, and/or SNAP benefits, which Sean kind of mentioned earlier. And we have 182 people a month that are walking into our Human Services Department requesting new benefits. In the past 11 months, we have served 282 children at our Lynchburg Youth Group Home. The Lynchburg Youth Group Home, which is located off of Florida Avenue, is a 28-bed facility that serves children that are placed either in foster care or shelter care. So this is not a facility for incarceration for kids that have committed crimes. This is children that are vulnerable and are in foster care or shelter care. That facility costs around $2.4 million to operate in a year. And there are four staff on a shift there, there are three shifts, three eight-hour shifts. There are four staff members that are taking care of those 28 children. And they do everything from supervision to cooking breakfast, lunch, and dinner, to making sure the facility is clean. They really do a phenomenal job. The 35,000 folks that are receiving benefits within the city are maintained by 38 of our workers in our Human Services Department, which equals out to about 920 cases per worker. Yes, sir.
This is something I brought up to, I think, Meche, and we didn't get it on the legislative agenda. But from my understanding, the state funding for human services is determined by population and not caseload.
Correct.
Correct.
And if you look at a place like Virginia Beach that has a booming population, we have the same caseload as Virginia Beach. We need to be doing whatever it takes to influence our state legislators to figure out how to correct that. Because that's how it should be done, is proportionally based on caseload.
Yeah, I'm so glad you mentioned that because when I looked at these numbers, I thought 920 cases, oh my gosh. I wouldn't know if I was coming or going. And so the way the state classifies human services, social services departments is by level. And so we're considered Level 3, which is the highest. And there are 28 departments within the state that are considered Level 3. Of those 28 departments, we're ranked fifth for having the highest number of caseloads, so.
And point out, you know, like we had in the email I sent about the state mandated funding and so forth. You know, we're mandated to have human services.
Yes.
And the state is the primary funder of human services. So that's something to, I guess, point out when we're looking at this.
Yeah, thank you for mentioning that. The 48 children that are waiting adoption and/or in foster care or receiving in-home services are managed by 15 workers in our Human Services Department. So that equals about 32 cases apiece. So you've made it through all of this data, and you've decided on my lunch break, I might want to go to one of the 17 beautiful parks here in Lynchburg and take a library book while I'm at it, just to take a brain break. And what we see here in the city is about 565 patrons between our two public library branches a day in the city. And they're accessing around 4,000 books and materials in our libraries. We see 782 citizens accessing programs and services within our Parks and Recreation Department. So that does not count the folks that are going to the 17 parks or over the 40 miles of trails. That would be a hard number to capture. I think on any given sunny weekend, you might have 282 people down by the love sign, down on the Percival's Isle Trail at any given time. So that's a harder number to capture. This number would be programs and services daily within our Parks and Recreation Department. 40% of those are served at one of our six neighborhood centers. And one of those centers, it costs around $118,000 a year to operate. Told you guys I got the fun part. Greg Patrick?
All right, I got my question now.
Okay, yeah.
Undocumented individuals in our city. Do we have a way to determine that? Is there anything we're using to, you know, ask that citizenship question? And one of the things I noticed when I was looking at the most recent information published by the state in the Virginia Department of Education, may not be a correlation, but in the last four years, the number of students we have in the K-12 system with English as a second language has doubled. So it was pretty steady. Before that, boom, doubled. Talking to people in the political realm, campaigning, knocking doors, the instances where they're coming across people that cannot speak English is way higher than it's ever been. So I want to know, because of what's coming down from the state government and from the federal government about the risk of state or federal funding for localities doing anything to harbor criminal undocumented immigrants within our city, what are we doing to identify those when we can? And how are we going to be proactive in assisting the administration when they come in in their efforts to take criminal migrants off our streets? So that's a question I have, and it's something I think we seriously need to look at.
Thank you.
All right, we don't always realize it, but you know, from the time we wake up to the time we go to sleep, we're using city services. Every time you drive on the road, flush your toilet, take a shower. And folks are experiencing those services kind of seamlessly throughout the day. And it's really amazing at how effectively we do that. City staff are delivering those services efficiently and effectively. City staff are doing a lot with a little, right? This isn't, these aren't the days before the Great Recession where if you ever wanted to make the argument that, you know, government had sufficient funding, you could make it then. The world has changed in those 15 years from there, since then. And we are delivering these services very efficiently and effectively and at a good value, we believe, to our taxpayers. That equipment we use to deliver the services is complex and costly. And the cost of that equipment has massively outpaced, the growth in the cost of that equipment has massively outpaced the rate of inflation. You look at some of that fire apparatus, and you know, five years ago, you could get some of those vehicles at half the cost that you're paying right now. And then, you know, city services improve the quality of life of our residents, they help us attract businesses. It's important to remember that people live here in the city for a reason. They locate their businesses here in the city for a reason. These are folks that want the type of services and amenities that we provide. So I think it's important that we focus on being the best Lynchburg city we can be and understand that that is our competitive advantage. And that is it for the data team today.
And everyone's still awake? Yay!
I did want to make one comment. If all of my colleagues haven't had a chance to go over and meet with, I would definitely encourage our new colleagues to meet with human services because I went over and April Watson gave me the briefing along with Preston. But had the entire team come up and really go through what they offer. And I think there's a lot of misconceptions really about some of the resources over there that are provided for the families. And a lot of what is offered is temporary. You know, a lot of what they are doing for the families of our city are in an effort to set them up for success and not just provide a crutch that is permanent. It's really to try to help the families get a step ahead ultimately. And so things are there for them as needed and then with hopes that they'll, you know, get ahead. And I learned a lot from that, from that presentation, talking to each department. And really, of course, it's heartbreaking too because you learn a lot about what people don't realize, that children and adults, I had no idea about the adult protective services calls that we have in the city. I was expecting the CPS calls and hearing about those because I already knew from, you know, from our law enforcement community about a lot of that stuff and social services. But was not prepared for that piece of it. So I think that that is such an important thing that not only we as city leaders know, but that our community members are fully aware of. And to end note that that is something that can be utilized because we do have adult neglect happening along with child neglect. But anyway, it's a very important resource for people to be educated on about what human services actually offers and what the truth is about what those resources are. So, but thank you for including that, I appreciate that. Very, very well done, by the way. I really appreciated the graphics.
In detailing on that, I think it's very important that we can just point out that human services in Lynchburg is underfunded and it's understaffed. And a lot of it has to do with the way that the state funds these organizations. And with that being the case, we should be loud and clear to Richmond that they need to fix it. If we're having the same caseload as Virginia Beach, but it's funded by population, it's a problem, right? But that's not our job to extract tax dollars from our local citizens to fix. It's got to be legislatively fixed in Richmond.
Tough thing, because Greg wanted to make a vote, is mandated services that, not simply for human services, but the sheriff's department, the commonwealth attorney, the clerk of court, the number of things annually that I call my kith and kin, right? So I have 17 departments, 26 with kith and kin that include other people. And you've been very generous in your public safety support over the last several years. You did at least one FTE in the sheriff's office. You've done, I know that we subsidize collections and/or assessments for the commissioner of revenue. I know that we, it was a cry, so that human cry at the state level, I know that it's been, as long as I've been in local government, it's something that we've attempted to be loud and vocal about. Because you're right, it is, 85% of any one dollar that's spent in human services is a state dollar. And there's a percentage there, 15% if we do the math, I think I did it right. I'm an attorney, not a mathematician. But then what happens is that we run into those unfunded mandates that are just prickly. So you get into those moments where we have to afford the services like Reed was talking about. And then also to your same point, Marty. What I find is that if there's an advocate, whether it's a sheriff's lobby or a commonwealth attorney lobby or a human service, and so we have, we do have Mercedes that is the intergovernmental relations officer and that we work well with our local delegation to ensure, because the voices do need to be heard. And realize the same conversations, and Greg always does a really good job of this. Because remember, and listen, I'm born, my family's from Louisiana, okay? And so I come from robbers and criminals and things like that. And so, and they have a certain, you know, tack and what they say. And I went down there and I saw how it works and what they do. And I went down and this is after the Katrina. And there was this guy, we went down and we looked at the different, you know, this is unpopular and I'm going to say something here, then just have some fun with me, like we were having fun over here. He said, I said, well, how did you do all this? He said, tax yourself, build yourself. And he used that accent, right? Because we, unlike the state, the state has an ability that we don't currently, Greg, correct? That they have a way in which to generate revenue that we cannot, right? And we do have a taxing authority, and I'm not, don't hear me saying what have you. Just, it's going to come back to, and we can make those appeals, and we will continue to make them. We also have certain expectations by the services because we are a city. Remember when we were, when Sean was doing his Sean-like presentation, well done, Sean, when he was looking at, he didn't, interestingly enough, he didn't look at any of the surrounding counties. He looked at cities, right? Because that's what we are, and that's the expectation of our citizens. And that, Marty, good point, I mean, Mr. Missions, good point about. our citizens. And that, Marty, a good point, I mean, Mr. Missions, good point about, it's a half million, half million in population in Virginia Beach. We are 80,000 people. And we have the same or more cases. Think about that. And remember that penny in Virginia Beach, that's easily what, seven and some shit?
Probably over eight at this point.
Eight million. Penny, penny, penny on the real estate out there is eight million as opposed to our 700,000. So it's just, great points made by all. I'm looking at the clock. We are ahead of time, which is fantastic. So you guys are going to get a little over an hour and 10 minutes. We, next reconvene at 1 o'clock. Sam, I guess, is, she's, she's, she's 10 minutes out. So if there's anything else that you want to add before we roll on into lunch?
Yes. As far as immigration, illegal immigrants, that's federal. Lynchburg cannot control that. But we need to know the population.
That's what I'm saying.
Okay. I have lots of people in my neighborhood now, war-tu, that do not speak English. And I believe it's our job is to reach out to them.
Absolutely. And I'm talking specifically about, you know, there's been, there's been a rise, and we've seen in the media coverage around here, of people that have actually been incarcerated or, or they've been arrested for committing crimes that are undocumented illegal immigrants that aren't supposed to be here in the first place.
Yes.
You know, not a lot of people know and talk about. The number two most wanted for rape in Baltimore that was an illegal immigrant was arrested right here in Lynchburg, Virginia.
Yes.
Right? We don't want those people in our community. And, and I think that, that the way we figure that out is, is, you know, whatever, and Winter and I have discussed this, we got to take a look at what the decisions the jail authority is making. If somebody comes into the jail and they're not supposed to be here, are we doing what we need to do with ICE and following the detainers and holding them until federal authorities can come pick people up out of jails that aren't supposed to be in this country and take them where they belong out of this country?
I'm, I'm pretty sure if we get, get that problem or have that problem, our law enforcement will take care of that problem for us.
It's a complex issue. And we just need to make sure we're doing what we can do.
We'll lock them up and wait for ICE.
That's right.
Well, kudos to city council. With a dense morning, quite a bit in it. We'll be reconvening here at 1 o'clock. I'll remind you that there is a souvenir, or there's a store downstairs. So if you, if you haven't got a gift for someone, for someone's birthday, Greg's birthday's tomorrow.
No, I'm not. No, I'm not. No, I'm not going to be 50. I'm not going to be 50. I'm also 32.
It's great. 51. That's right.
News in advance, headline tomorrow, city council meets and Greg turns 50. I like it. I like it. There, there is the shop downstairs.
I won't let him do that.
There is a tour, if, if you'd like to take it. Ted, is Ted?
He's coming right back.
He's coming right back. You're welcome to stay in here. You're, it is an hour and some change. So if you need to run and do some errands, I understand that as well.
I'm gonna go outside to get warm. I'll be out there. I'll have my lunch outside.
I haven't gotten you your birthday present. So if you want to pick a scarf downstairs, it's on me. Okay? And, and I, and I did mention Dr. Ben Copeland is going to be around. And he's just having lunch, hanging out with me. So if you'd like to hang out with us, you're welcome to. But otherwise, I'll see you guys at 1 o'clock.
Good job.
All right.